The June 2020 County Commission meeting will now come to order. If you will, just a footnote that Jerry Langley will not be here tonight. His father passed away over the weekend, and just keep him in your prayers. And I'm going to ask Commissioner Waters to do our invocation and Commissioner Moe to do our pledge. Please stand.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day that you've given us. We ask that you be with us as we go through the meeting tonight. At this time, we ask, Father, that we express our sympathy to Commissioner Langley and his family. We ask that you be with them through this difficult time. We ask now that you be with us as we continue through our meeting. Forgive us of our sins, for these things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Chairman, if at all, would it be okay if we excused Commissioner Langley from this meeting?
Yes.
I'll make that motion that we excuse Commissioner Langley.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Six, zero.
So in other words, this vote does not count?
Right. Unless we need it.
He's already excused. We bring him back to the desk.
Bit of housekeeping. Again, if you've got a cell phone, please turn it off or either put it in the silent mode. We're down to conflict of interest. Is there any commissioner here tonight who wishes to make a disclosure regarding any matter that is before this board? Hearing none, we move forward. There is one change to the agenda. Mr. Greg Holtrane will not join us tonight. He will be with us in July. Need a motion to approve the amended agenda? Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Six, zero. And we're down to items for consent. I mean, I jumped over a couple here. We don't have anyone here for public comments, so no one signed up. And our legislative update from our elected official, we don't have anyone here. Yeah, I jumped over two or three. But anyway, when now we're down to items for consent, is there a motion to approve tonight's?
You got James.
I'm sorry. I can't, I've got my scribbled on here so much, I can't keep you. Is Jim's in the back, right? Okay.
Jim?
Come on, Jim.
All right. Hope everybody's doing well. Can you hear me okay? All right. I was going to keep it kind of short for y'all tonight. So, you know, as far as the U.S. goes, we're at about 1.8 million cases of COVID virus. In the U.S., we're at 104,000 deaths. So looking at North Carolina, we're at 29,265 confirmed cases, 898 deaths, which 68% of those are in congregant settings, 650 hospitalized, and North Carolina so far has done 421,908 tests. In Beaufort County, we have 37 confirmed cases, no deaths. Right now, we don't have anybody in the hospital, and so, and we have just two cases that we consider active at this time. So the graph here I pulled down from the state to show the four trends that the state's looking at when they do any kind of consideration for the phases of reopening. Up in the upper left-hand side is currently hospitalized. That number is kind of flat. The second one down from there is the number of people that are in the emergency department for COVID-like illness. And you can see that that number had been going down, but there's a little bit of a spike here at the end, but the overall trend looks like it should be going down. The purple one at the bottom right-hand side is the number of tests that are positive out of everybody that was tested. So the 400,000 tests they've done, you can see the percentage of them that are being positive, and that's at flat. And the last one over on the left-hand side is the total cases, and you can see that that trend is going up. So out of the four indicators that they're using, there's one of them, the number of cases, that doesn't look good. Rest of them all are flat, are in the positive, which the one that's not looking good could be based off of how many more tests they're doing. Because right now, they're pushing, doing a lot of tests, so that could be the reason why that looks the way it does. That is probably the reason why. So as far as North Carolina numbers, that is important to me, is looking at the deaths. And here you can see the total deaths, 898, and you can see the curve that does a kind of a trend on the death count. You can see at the very end that it drops off quite a bit over the last three or four weeks. And there's three things that I could think of why it would look like that. So three conclusions I might make from this is, one, is a milder strain is occurring in the area. It could be that there's better medical treatment right now when somebody does get put into the hospital, they get identified earlier, interventions are helping to cut down on the number of people that have severe reaction to the virus. And the last one is that there may be a delay in the reporting system for deaths that's causing it. So I can't tell you which one it is right now, but it is at least, you know, I'm hoping that it's because of better treatments out there, and people are more likely to survive right now. So just looking at all the different information about the deaths in North Carolina, so by race, you can see that 59% are white and 34% are black. And what this indicates is that there is a higher rate of death occurring in black and African Americans. So in North Carolina, 22% of the residents are black, so to have 34% dying shows a disproportionate number of people that are black that are dying. Age, you can see that 63% of those that die are 75 and older, another 20% are 65 to 74, which again indicates, you know, 83% of those are 65 and older. Again, that's your high-risk vulnerable groups. And then the 50 to 64, I don't know specifically, but I'm sure a lot of those people have the underlying conditions that help make the disease worse for them. And in males, 53% are positive who have died. That's for North Carolina. So getting into Beaufort County, one of the things that I look at is the number of people that go to the doctor, how many of them have, you know, like respiratory type of illness. And in our county, we're looking at about 8%. Normally during a non-flu season type, it would be about 1% or 2% that would be symptomatic with something like COVID-like. So this means that there's a lot more people probably going to the doctor simply because of respiratory problems, where they may have stayed at home in the past, but they want to get looked at to make sure they don't have COVID, so that's probably why that's so high. This is a timeline showing all the cases that we've had in Beaufort County, to include the one we had yesterday, which was the last one that we had. And so if you look at that, you can see we stayed pretty steady throughout the whole epidemic, the pandemic, where we usually get one or two. There was a little time in there where we had some cases of three on two different days that were back-to-back. So that might look like a spike, but I would not call that a spike. I think it's more of a randomness that occurred because there was one particular family that hit pretty hard, and so they would have all showed up at the same time. So I don't think we could say that. So I would say that as of right now, there's nothing that indicates a large outbreak in Beaufort County. Obviously, we do have it in our community, and it's running around, but it's not like a large outbreak that I can register at this point. So looking at testing information, every week I compile this information. So you see, we're doing much more testing in May than we did, you know, in April, and we're trying to increase those numbers, trying to get that up to about 300 per week. And just to help you with some numbers here, in Beaufort County, we have tested 924 that we know of. And however, there's Beaufort County residents that haven't been tested outside of Beaufort County. So total residents tested is 1,131. So that's about 2.5% of our population has been tested so far. The health department has done 131 of those tests. The graph, the bottom graph shows you what percentage of those tests were positive. You can see that we started out high at the beginning of the epidemic, but at this point, we're at 2%, hanging at 2%, 3%, and now we're actually dropped even lower. So we only had one test that was positive out of the 266 that we did last week. Again, just to me, that indicates that we don't have an outbreak occurring in Beaufort County that's being registered. So looking at Beaufort County with 37 cases, you can see that whites make up 54%, blacks are making up 20%, and Hispanics is a little bit higher at 22%. This is a small sample size of only 37, so you really can't make any general thoughts about this other than these are the numbers, you know. For females, it's about 55, 56% compared to males, and you can see the age group of those who are coming up positive. A lot of them are the 25 to 49, and the 60s to 64, they're the ones that are coming to get tested. Possibly those 65 and older are doing a better job of just staying at home and not going, you know, going out. That's what we hope.
Jim, can I interrupt you for a moment?
You may.
I only interrupt you because it's apropos to what you're talking about now, testing.
Yes.
Has anything come down from the state of North Carolina about mass testing for the public?
Well, it, no, not specifically. They're calling something, some people calling mass testing just means open it up for anybody that wants one. Others say mass testing is setting up a tent and everybody coming through and testing and stuff like that. Are you referring to the first one or the second one?
Wait. Tell me what you can tell me about what you know about testing with antibodies.
Okay, none of those would be done with antibodies as far as mass testing goes. With antibody-
The idea is to find out who may have been, what's the word, could have, could have come and caught-
Previous case are active now. So the antibody-
Previous cases active now.
Right. Antibody testing would be able to detect that as long as they're not too early on in their disease process.
Yeah.
Okay, so-
Or if they may have already had it, didn't know it.
Then it would be good because then it would show up. So what would be the purpose of doing antibody tests? Is it simply for me to know that I've been exposed? Then I think that you could go to your provider and they may do that for you. But as far as public health control, it's not a priority, top priority for public health control. And I also think that it would not show a lot of cases. If you do a whole bunch of tests, my estimates, we would have to do like 600, 700 in my county, Beaufort County, our county, just to pick up two, three, maybe up to six cases. So it would not be a good, efficient time put in towards doing that. It would be a good thing to do if you could do a random study to determine the prevalence of COVID in the community. But again, we would, our county would have to do a good 600 to 700 tests in order to come up with that statistic, so.
Is there anything discussed coming down from the state where that can be done?
My understanding is they have already commissioned with University of North Carolina, Duke, and ECU to do that study.
Good.
But it's not mass testing. It's just, it's just called a prevalent study.
Prevalent study.
Prevalent study.
Do they pick random folks, or?
They're supposed to. If it's a good study, they're going to pick random people to do, get on it.
I was going to say, I would like to volunteer.
Oh, that would be random then. But the question about mass testing is, I don't believe that we should do mass testing where we just open up a site and everybody come through, because the biggest thing is, if somebody comes through today and they test negative, that doesn't mean they won't be negative tomorrow or get, come in contact with later. So I think we, you should have a reason to get tested. We're pretty liberal on what we call reasonable to do it. If you think you've been exposed, and then, you know, you should say, I think I got exposed and why I got exposed, potentially got exposed, and then we would do the test for you. So that's pretty easy.
Is that at the health department where it's done?
Or your provider.
The provider.
Yeah, we're trying to, we've done about 14% of all the testing in the county, so we are depending a lot on the providers to do some of those testing.
And, I mean, just to be clear, the random test would be antibody test?
Correct.
Okay, good.
My guess is they'd actually do both, but-
They would do both?
They would probably do both, just to see if they're active now versus active two months ago or something like that.
Okay, good. And give me the terminology of that test again. What's it called?
It's a prevalent study.
Prevalent study, which is a random test.
Well, no, prevalence means old and new cases.
Old and new.
Incidence means new cases. Prevalence means old and new cases.
And you're talking about 600, 700, 700, 800, about 1.5% of the population?
I estimate in Beaufort County, we're probably at about 2%.
2% of the population?
Could be.
Okay.
Could be.
Nice.
And that would be the top number. Less of us, less, if, yeah, less than 2%.
Less than 2%?
Yeah.
Get about 800.
At most. Now, this is, this graph I pulled out separately because I think it's one of the most interesting things to see, is the number of cases that we've had identified. 35% of them have been asymptomatic, and most of these tests are done for pre-op, and they were identified that way, or they were identified as a contact with a case, and so we tested them, but they never had symptoms, or symptoms didn't show up certainly when they were tested. So that's 35%. So I actually was doing some research into scenarios and trying to look at that, and I saw a CDC site where they estimated 35% of people probably asymptomatic too. So we're right on average with that. So again, we're still, the message, you've heard this, and, you know, I do believe it's the best thing for us to put out to the public is to wear a weight and wash. So, you know, we wear the mask, and people, and there's great debate on that, and I know a lot of people don't wear the mask, but the biggest reason we're asking people to wear the mask is because if I was one of those 35% that's asymptomatic, I could potentially expose things around me. And so it does help me when I have the virus. If I'm coughing or sneezing, it doesn't get out as easily. So that's the biggest reason. It doesn't help necessarily protect me because I'm wearing the mask from somebody else, but it does protect the other people. And of course, the six-foot distance is still an important part of this public health messaging that we're trying to get out. And the most important thing to me is washing the hands, because we are very touchy with things, and we get our hands all over stuff. We get viruses on there. The virus will die eventually on our hands, but we put it on your eyes or your mouth or your nose, and that's where you get, get the inoculation or the exposure into you. And so you could avoid a lot if you'd wash your hands and keep area surfaces clean. So moving forward from here, we continue to do the Emergency Operating Center work, and I think there's, there's three big messages that I'd like to start putting out, is one is personal responsibility. So the wear a weight and wash is all about personal responsibility. Businesses opening up, that's about their responsibility to provide safety for their patrons, and it's about us staying home if we're vulnerable to the disease. So we have some personal responsibilities that we all need to make sure we're doing. We want to focus on the high-risk people, those that are more likely to actually suffer. We know that 65 and older, we know that people that have certain health conditions, our long-term care facility sites, those places, we want to make sure we continue to focus on them, and then control the active cases. And that's where it's important when we identify who is positive, that we do that contact tracing so that we can isolate it and keep it from spreading in our community. And we've been doing that from the very beginning, and I do, I have a lot of faith that that's helping us to keep our numbers down is because we are doing that in our county. And so my nurses at the health department, I tell you, they have been on top of that, and I appreciate everything they've done. We're also planning out hurricane sheltering needs, you know, because you imagine, we had to open up a shelter in the midst of a pandemic, and we have certain, certain obstacles and hurdles that we need to cross over, so we're, we're looking at that at the EOC level. As far as the contact tracing, I have 11 people that are staffed and trained to do that if we need to. So far, I've only needed to keep about three of them busy, but, you know, I'm prepared to move up to 11 of them if we have to. Last thing, I guess, as far as providing guidance, you know, as businesses open up, they're talking to us about it, you know, the school board just voted to go ahead and have graduation ceremonies. So they've contacted me, and I've done what I can to look at their work plan and try to give some advice on how to keep the potential spread down with their, with their ceremonies. And then also planning for vaccination. Ultimately, we think sometime between December and January, February, March of next year, we will do vaccinations. So I wanted to give you all a quick little summary, is we think we're going to open up four pods in the county. We'll run 10 days in Washington, seven days in Chacoanity, five days in Aurora and Bellhaven. And the goal will be to vaccinate as many people as want it in the county when the time comes. We're going to, we're planning for a whole 47,000, but we know we're not going to have to do all that because we'll be able to give nutrient, some vaccines, they'll be able to do their own people, fighting will be able to do their own people, school system may be able to do their own people because since they have school nurses, you know, those kind of things. And then you know a lot of people aren't going to want to get vaccinated either, so we'll, we'll be prepared for that. When we do open up, we'll probably start with older and vulnerable people first, a couple of days, and then we'll move to the whole public as a whole. So that's where we're at right now. Any questions?
Questions for Jim? All right. Commissioner Waters got a question?
I think, I think I know what the answer is. When you look at the deaths in North Carolina, we're still not being told how many people are in nursing homes, what, what the number is that died in nursing homes.
We do know that congregant setting, we do know nursing homes.
We do.
We do. There's a, there's a dashboard on there.
Okay.
If you want, I'll look it up for you and get it to you tomorrow what it is. But when I figured out that 68% were in congregant settings, I added that into the number.
Okay, I got you. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim.
You're welcome.
We're down to item H, items for consent.
Ms. Chairman?
Yes.
Before we get into this, I might pull item number one for more discussion.
Okay. Motion to approve, two through, I'm going to, I'm going to pull it down underneath 16, so if we approve two through 16, then it'll become number 17. And that'll be the next item we take up.
All right.
Just a second.
Second.
All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Four, two. Motion passes. Okay, you want to have Chris come up and talk about, or you got questions for?
Well, yeah, we need, what this is, is manager may want to speak to it before I talk about it, but we've got a lot of people that are making decisions for us under this item, and we need to know what they are. There can be some pretty, pretty onerous decisions made for us. I pulled up one five years ago and looked at it. Couldn't get the, this modern proposal to come up on my computer, but I looked at it, and it's about 600 pages of bureaucratic garbage. It's, it's, it's a useless thing until you get to the part where it says, oh, we're going to do this, and we're going to do that, and we're going to do something else. And, and-
We're going to do this, we're going to do that, and we're going to do something else. This hasn't been presented to the commissioners, and we should be making a decision on this, and we should be reviewing this.
Chris, go ahead.
Yes, so if I'm understanding your question correctly, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there was some, that plan, you're right, there is a lot of, seems to be a lot of fluff in that document. It's 600 and some pages, so there is a lot of, a lot of fluff in that document. But there are some requirements that that document says local areas should be doing to help mitigate those emergencies. A lot of those things and those objectives, we're already doing under other requirements for, for grant obligations. So for example, our EMPG or Emergency Preparedness Grant Program that EM utilizes for funds, a lot of those objectives, shelter evaluations, interoperability plans with local governments, things of that nature are already required under that, so there's, it's a bit of a cut and paste for the requirements under this plan versus other agreements that we're already in. The plan that is, is in place right now is still under the review process for FEMA, so I'm sorry, for the state. It's been approved by FEMA, but it's still being bounced around at, at the state level. So we're anticipating, we're not anticipating any changes on that. If there were changes, we would definitely bring that back to the board, but that's, that's where we are with this current plan. Does that kind of answer your questions, Commissioner?
Can I say one thing, Commissioner Richardson, I think will, will help. Chris is going there. To receive federal funds for mitigation, we have to be part of one of these plans in the state of North Carolina, and our region is the Panico Plan. That plan is coming up to be five years old now. So you're right, it does have a lot of mitigation efforts that are in those strategies, none of which are done without us coming back to you individually when funds come. So the houses that we've raised, those kind of things, we can't do anything with that until coming back before the commissioners on each one of those decisions. So the mitigation plan is, it's a master plan of looking at, at how to try to keep the damage low from disasters, but anytime funds would be involved, it's a requirement for us, first of all, to get mitigation funds to be a part of this regional plan. And when those funds would come, we can't get them until we would come to you and ask, would you approve us for each and every project?
Well, the problem I have with this is I've been presented with a 600-page document with no notice to, and to vote for it, and I'm not going to vote for it. And I don't vote for things I don't get a chance to examine and, and look at. And I don't know what kind of promises are in this thing. Somebody could come back to us later on and said, well, you said you were going to do this, and you have to do it in order for something else to happen. You never know how things are going to work out. I think the commissioners should have had a review of that five pages of promises out of this 600-page document before we're asked on like three days' notice to vote on it.
Understand, one other thing I will say on the five-page document, I'm taking for granted that was sent to all commissioners. Do you know any challenges? Just-
Commissioner Richardson asked for it. It's in the plan, so.
Okay. So, so on that five pages that you're saying, you're right, it is lengthy. All of the things except the last three have been in progress over the last five years. They've been going on with what we've been doing in the original plan. One of the last three, it says new, but it's really not, and that is our debris management, which we already have in place. It's just incorrect in that plan, to be honest with you. So just a little further information.
What are the other two new things that are in the plan? Excuse me?
One, one was encouraging a participation into the CRS program, the National Flood Reduction piece for the national flood. That requires, from my understanding, some, some adoptions by, by local boards as far as free board space and things like that. But there is, that program is an opportunity for people with flood insurance to see a reduced rate, but it is encouraged. It's not mandated in the plan that we did.
The second thing to that, speaking in the microphone. The second thing for that is coordination with the NC Forestry Service, which we already have the coordination, but this specifically says that we will put fire danger on our website daily. We coordinate with them to know what that is, but we don't post it right now. So that was the other new thing for mitigation.
Well, it's amazing to me, the nitty little things that are in this plan, like severe storms, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's, it's a useless document. There's nothing but bureaucracy rolled on top of bureaucracy. You need to read this thing if you don't believe me.
Did I hear you correctly say, unless we's in one of these regions, I call it a region called CS, a Panico Plan.
The, the second thing to that, speaking in the microphone, the second thing for that is coordination with the NC Forestry Service, which we already have the coordination, but this specifically says that we will put fire danger on our website daily. We coordinate with them to know what that is, but we don't post it right now. So that was the other new thing for mitigation.
Well, it's amazing to me, the nitty little things that are in this plan, like severe storms. I mean, as far as I'm concerned, it's, it's a useless document. There's nothing but bureaucracy rolled on top of bureaucracy. You need to read this thing if you don't believe me.
Did I hear you correctly say unless we's in one of these regions, I call it a region called CS, a PAMCO plan, unless we're in this group, that we don't get any FEMA money? Is that correct?
For, for mitigation projects.
That means raising houses and that. How about cleaning up debris and stuff like that?
That's under storm, so we would still get the cleanup debris because that comes with a federal declaration for a particular hurricane. This, this mitigation money would be after an event and to prepare before the next event comes in place.
And this is just a five-year renewal? This is something that we've been doing all the time?
Yes. And the reason it's not a final plan has nothing to do with us. That's just sitting at the state level. They haven't put their final stamp on that plan, and they'd let the time run out.
Thanks.
Any more discussion? Thank you.
Is there an action needed since we're pulled, you can say?
Yeah.
Make a motion to approve?
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Four, two. Motion passes. We're down to a public hearing. We're talking about the budget for 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. On page 229 of your, of your agenda package, you'll see this is the, the public hearing notice item for the budget. When we originally wrote this, we were anticipating that we would have a budget ordinance ready for you, kind of like we did last year. The board at their last budget meeting said we don't want to do that yet. We've still got some things we need to do. So the language in here is a little, is a little off, just want to give you that. But you'll see on the next page that you have the public hearing, and we have put that out there to encourage the public to come. We've also provided additional opportunities for the public to speak if they didn't want to due to the limitations of our seating due to COVID. And it's my understanding from the clerk that she's not received any calls on that. So if I may, I just need to give you a brief overview of the 2020-21 proposed budget, and then you can open your public hearing and take any comments that might be available. The fiscal year 2021 recommended general fund budget is $59,227,062. This is $411,681 less than the original fiscal year 1920 budget. The recommended budget maintains the add the lower on tax rate at 63 and a half cent for $100 of assessed valuation. The budget also maintains all services proposed in the prior year and absorbs an anticipated $1,089,830 or 11.22% decrease in sales tax revenue due to the, due to, from the prior year. And we do that without appropriating any fund balance. That is our best guesstimate of what's going to happen due to the economic shutdown due to COVID-19. We hope that we are, that our estimates are wrong and they're better than that, but we won't know what those sales tax revenue numbers look like until December. We won't have a good feel for that because they're delayed three months. The recommended budget makes cuts to the majority of all county departments and holds the funding for the school system, community college, and outside agencies flat. And I know there's some continuing discussion on the school system budget, so, but the recommended budget does hold that flat. The water enterprise fund recommended budget is $7,570.91. The budget continues the rate study established in fiscal year 1819 that consolidates the existing rates over a five-year period into a uniform rate for all customer classes and increases the water rate by 3%. It also continues the 10-year CIP established in fiscal year 1819. The solid waste enterprise fund recommendation, recommended budget is $3,829,000, $3,829,411. A $5 increase in the per solid, the per year solid waste fee for a total of $160 per year is recommended to pay for increased tonnage of disposed waste. And I know there's been some discussion with this board about that actually being $10 instead of $5. The board has completed three budget work sessions and is taking straw votes to approve two service expansion projects. The first is in the Economic Development Department that changes the current administrative assistant position to an analyst position due to a retirement and decreases existing contract service expenditures to keep this change at no additional cost. The second is a comprehensive expansion of clinical and educational services at the Health Department. This expansion would add a family nurse practitioner or what we call in our pay plan, a physician extender two, and increase a processing assistant three from a part-time to a full-time position. Program modifications and additional billing for services would generate a net savings of $16,840, $854. The board is still reviewing information from the school board relating to its budget request, and that is an overview of where you stand to date with your budget and your budget workshops. I'll be happy to answer any questions from the board before you open your public hearing.
Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Need a motion to go into public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we go into the public hearing on the school, I'm sorry, on the budget.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Six, zero. Motion passes. Is there anyone here tonight that would like to come forward and speak on the 2021 budget? Hearing none. No motion to close?
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We are a little bit early on this, but somebody was coming in 15 minutes from now. Said that public hearing was at 6:25.
The act said at 5:30 or similar.
Okay, very good.
There you go.
Motion to close?
Seven, eight.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of those in favor, raise your right hand. Six, zero. Motion passes. Okay, we're down to J. Item for, oh, you need anything? Okay. Items for discussion? Yeah, we're here. Mr. Richardson, Commissioner Richardson?
Well, I'd like for somebody to report on the situation with the J. I got the information.
Christine's on her way.
Somebody's trying to tell me.
She's on her way.
She's here.
Mr. Chairman, are, are we going to discuss the budget, any changes to the budget, or look at the information that the school system has sent to us?
We can. I didn't hear anything, so I, so we can certainly go back to that if you like. What's the pleasure of the board?
Christine's here, so let's get her.
And then we'll go back. That's fine. Christine?
Good evening, commissioners. For the June 1st, 2020 update, currently approximately 50 Beaufort County inmates are being housed in Craven County, Cabarrus County, Onslow County, as well as a few in Central Prison for safekeeping. As of today, June 1st, North Carolina courts expanded their court operations, therefore transportation of inmates will be increasing this week as well as the following weeks. Work completed in May, due to inmate housing challenges and restrictions due to the COVID-19 pandemic, work was delayed in the Beaufort County Detention Center. Staff and contractors worked diligently and as flexible as regulations allow to complete as much work as possible. Select plumbing system repairs were completed, painting as well as plumbing issues were resolved in the new inmate training room. The holding cell floor, damaged floor tile was removed, and the drain line was lowered. Montgomery Technology Systems completed the demolition of the slider controls and the removal of the bar doors in cell blocks E, F, G, and H. The demolition in cell blocks B and cell block C was delayed due to extended housing of a high-risk inmate during, due to the COVID-19 crisis. The work scheduled for June, we will continue addressing the plumbing issues, complete the epoxy flooring in the holding cell, demo the existing control room, install the new control room counter. June 1st through June 10th, the work scheduled is to install the new head end and touchscreen for the MTS control system. They will hook up temporarily selected doors as determined by the jail administration. This will allow the existing doors to immediately be operated by the new system as soon as the new hardware is installed. June 10th through June 26th, conduit will be run where required, and new wire will be pulled to all remaining doors throughout the facility. Also, June 10th through June 25th, new frames will be cut out and new frames will be installed. MTS is still cautiously optimistic about the delivery of the new hardware. The hardware supplier is still giving a ship date from Texas of the week of June 22nd. Therefore, MTS is estimating a delivery date of June 26th, which is the Friday of that week. They are showing an installation from June the 29th through July 3rd, working on the control system and the hardware installation. There are currently four people here on site working with MTS with a fifth person scheduled to arrive on Thursday. This pushes out the, the final installation through the month of July, hoping to finish installation the first week in August. Are there any questions?
Just, okay. Any discussion? Thank you.
I'm not sure. I'm not sure the, the cost of the housing.
I'm sorry.
Brian?
Oh, absolutely.
Ms. Revels, it's my understanding from the chief deputy that they've had some conversations with Pitt County on use of their facility. They're in the process of, there has been conversation between the two sheriffs, which my understanding, I've been told that was a positive conversation. The next step is, is the negotiation on being able to use that facility. Haven't gotten that call yet, but we're, that's the next step for us. My understanding is if, if we're able to make that happen, which we believe we can based on all the information we've been given, then that will allow us to pull all of our inmates from all over the state back to the Pitt County facility, both male, female, and juvenile. They'll have a medical piece as well, which will save us a tremendous amount of money because we have folks scattered all over North Carolina. So we are working hard to make that, make sure that happens. And our belief is if that's able to happen, then we would be able to make up the difference in whatever cost we have with that additional delay. That's our goal.
Okay. I assume that we would staff that facility like we're doing down in Craven?
That is my understanding, that that's probably the way that has to work, that we would staff it like we were staffing the Craven unit as well. Yes, sir. But it would allow us the opportunity to, to house all the inmates there. I think that, I think the capacity on that one is, is like 100 inmates, so.
It's a pod, isn't it?
Yeah, yes, sir. It's a, it's a
Basically a pod. I know the women have got to be somewhere else.
Well, my understanding is, and I haven't been in it, I think Christine has been in it, to one, to a piece of it, not the state, but has, has visited.
Thank you for that.
That, yes. Want to clarify that. That it is a pod, but in that pod, they also have segregation, so they're able to handle.
It's a wing.
Right. They're able to handle all the different.
Sure, it's got pods, yeah. Yeah, whatever.
Mr. Chairman, I got a question.
Mr. President?
Mr. Manager, I know that we said that we had talked to the sheriffs. Have anybody talked or reached out to the commissioners of Pitt County?
Not at this time. The, the conversation, as I understand it from the chief deputy, was that the two sheriffs had had conversations. Sheriff Dance was going to have a conversation with her board. And as you recall, there were some positive conversations at one time about doing that. And then after that occurred, there would be some communication between administrations to try to work out the details.
The reason I ask, I think, last time we was over there, you was, it fell through. That board has changed, and it fell through, remember?
I certainly hope that the opportunity for them to receive revenue for using a facility that's not currently occupied would, would be beneficial.
It was beneficial then, but they, they turned us down. I think you and I went over to
Yeah, we were over there.
Yes. And if I'm not mistaken, they turned us down at that time.
To use Christina's words, we're cautiously optimistic that that deal is, that we'll be able to get that
Well, I hope so.
Me too.
Thank you.
Yeah, I talked to one of the commissioners probably seven or eight months, nine months ago, to see what we could do. And they said have your sheriff call their sheriff, and it just kind of dropped from that. So it's nice that it might work out. Any more questions for Christine or Brian? Thank you.
She was the last one in the jail a few months.
I haven't spent any time over there.
Thank you.
I'm gonna go back.
Back to the jail.
No. So we're gonna go back to item I, under the, the budget 2021. And Mr. Waters, I believe you had a comment. Commissioner Waters?
Well, I, I had a chance this afternoon to review the information from the school system, and I thought maybe I would highlight some of the things that I, I saw. We had asked them to estimate their savings up, up through the end of the year. And the superintendent says that the, I anticipate a cost savings of approximately $135,000 with regard to utility and transportation saving as a result of COVID-19 school closures for part of March and all of April and May. Today, the district has reopened for staff to close out the year and prepare for the summer learning and the new year. When you, and one of the other questions was, you know, what is the fund balance looking like? And their chief financial officer said the fund balance on June the 30th of 2019 was $1,203,210. And his estimate, assuming everything went according to this savings, their fund balance on June the 30th of 2020 would be $1,338,210. That's on the current side. And I don't have it right here in front of me or highlighted. On the capital side, it was somewhere in the neighborhood of $300,000.
$200,000 and change.
Okay.
And then on that current expense, please, I know the school finance officer provided you with that number. Just wanted to give you a clarification. I think that number's a little Commissioner Waters, I believe the capital fund balance reserves around 240, 250. I'm going by memory. And just wanted to make a clarification on the current expense fund balance for the schools. I know the school finance officer provided you with that 1.2 million number. I believe the number that is more accurate to provide is available fund balance, because you're only interested in what they can spend.
Right.
And that is the number I sent out, and I believe that was $1,079,000, but I'm going from memory.
That, that sounds right. One of the, one of the other areas that we had discussion on was on the teacher supplement. And there was a schedule that was sent to us that showed zero to two with a bachelor was 1,600, three to 15 years with a bachelor is 1,625, and 16-plus years with a bachelor, that is $1,650. And then with a master's, zero to two years, the number's 1,675. Three to 15 years with a master is 1,700, and 16-plus is 1,750. There was schedules that were attached. The local paid full-time employees, the 91 that we pay or fund was $3,826,000. And then when you add the social security retirement and hospitalization, that total number is $5,445,000. And I think that's kind of the highlights. You know, some of these had as many as 60-some pages, and I think that was the one that had all the substitute. If a person, you know, worked one week, they were in their one-line item. So it was kind of lengthy. But that's, that's the information that, that they supplied to us as of today. But that's, that's the information that, that they supplied to us as of today. And I don't, I don't know whether you've had a chance to look at this, at each one of your desks. I left a sheet of paper there or a spreadsheet. It shows at the very top of it, it shows the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners' current expense funding. It shows Beaufort County in, this is coming out of the association's 2019 county map book. That allocation was $2,135,000, and we were ranked number 21 in the state of North Carolina. The other two on there, I just pulled those at random. Wake County, their allocation is $2,680,000, and they rank number 11 in the state. Our joining county, Pitt, their allocation is $1,594 per student, and their rank is number 51 in the state. Took a look at the budget as it relates to the ADM. If you look at the last six years, their enrollment has continued to roll off. And so, you know, I said, why don't, why don't we take a look at some kind of method of reviewing their budget as we look at next year? If you, if you look at the ADM and you take the allocation that we fund locally and multiply it times the drop in enrollment of 127 students, that's a reduction of 302,147,000. Then if you turn around and says, okay, you know, things are going to cost more, so I pulled up, Googled the Consumer Price Index. And for 2020, that CPI number is .4, and for '21 is 1.2. And because you've got six months in both of those years, the average is .8. So I adjusted the current funding of $14,767,000, took away the drop in the enrollment. So I came up with a budget of $15,069,000. Multiplied that times the CPI and came up with an increase of $120,554. When you do the combination of the ADM reduction and then add back the Consumer Price Index, you come up with 181,000, a decrease of 181,593. And it's my thought that, you know, every year, we talk about what's happening with the school system as their enrollment drops. And at the state level, their state funding is tied to the ADM. And I really think, based on where we're located at now, as being number 21 in the state of North Carolina, on the local funding at the local level, I think we need to, we need to use until the school system and the county can get together and come up with a different methodology that in this upcoming budget, we should have, we should have adjusted, and we can round that number off. But I think on the current side, I would recommend that we consider dropping that to, dropping it $180,000. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. What, John?
Just a note on the fund balance. Their, their budget that they gave us, they're drawing 92,000 out of that fund balance. So his forecast of it going up to what he gave us is off by 92,000.
Maybe you forgot that.
May I?
Commissioner Richardson?
All right, let's see if I got this right. Last year, according to the audit, they had an available fund balance of what?
Available fund balance of $1,079,000 and change.
All right. Now, this year, they have a projected fund balance of what?
Well, just add 135,000 to that. Because what I, what I used in my presentation was what Willie Mack said, and it, it was different than what Anita said. Anita was taking out, she was using the available fund balance, which is 1,079, I think is the number. And then you add 135,000 in the savings, then, you know, their fund balance would at least increase. Now, that does not include the capital. They, you know, there's a separate fund balance for the capital, and that was 240, 240,000.
Let's see now. You don't run the schools for like three months, and you really don't save any money. They only cost $35,000 of savings for not running those schools three months. And I just want to be on record as saying, I don't believe it.
Well, I think what you heard the superintendent say the other night, and to my, to my knowledge, I think I'm correct in saying this, is that no employee lost their job. There was no cut on personnel cost. And as you well know, if you look, if you look at these attachments that we got today, you know, unless you, unless you cut staff or cut their pay, I mean, I don't know what that exact number is, but they made the comment the other night when we were here on the utilities, they saved 50,000 during the month of April. That was, that was Willie Mack, the chief financial officer. I mean, I agree with you, Commissioner Richardson. We don't know what that exact number is. But as you look around, and like on transportation, you know, they didn't, I mean, they kept all their employees, and so the insurance still had to be paid. Where they saved at was on fuel, and supposedly they, they've prepaid for some fuel for this coming year.
Sam?
The problem here is everyone's still getting paid, and this year is being finished out online, even if it's not being finished out at the schools, which you and I and quite a few others believe should have happened. They should have never shut down the schools. But that was not their choice. That was Governor Cooper's unilateral choice on a Saturday afternoon, when the council of state, of course, was not conferred with. So I kind of have to agree with Commissioner Waters on this one. I don't see where they saved any money. I mean, they paid their, they paid their people. Buildings have to be paid for. Buildings have to be maintained. They still fed kids. And it goes to a lot of trouble to feed them as well. I don't see, I don't really see how they saved a whole lot of money.
Well, I'm not changing my position on the thing, because the money's there, find it.
Anyone else?
I guess my question is, is where are we at on the budget? I mean, as a, as a timeline, are we, and I realize that Commissioner Langley's not here, and I don't know what the wishes are of the board. I know we've got to have at least one more meeting.
Where you currently stand with the budget is that you have met your statutory obligation of having at least one public hearing on the budget. So you've done that. Where you stand is you need to have a budget in place before the end of the fiscal year. Between now and then, you can have as many meetings or as few meetings as you want. We just need some final direction so that we can put the budget ordinance together for you to, to bring back to you, so you can formally adopt. And that would have to be at a special call meeting. I mean, we do have a meeting scheduled next week already, a special call meeting to adopt the budget ordinance. But we would need to understand from the board where the board is on that final number and any changes that you want to make to the budget ordinance itself. We would put that together for you. Now, if you don't want to do that next week, we can certainly, you can have additional meetings. We can kick that one over to a week later. We just still need to advertise for it. But you are bound by June 30th unless you adopt an interim budget, which I would recommend to you not to enter, to adopt an interim budget. You could cross over into the next fiscal year, but it is, yeah, I wouldn't recommend that with an interim budget.
Comments?
I guess then, I'm assuming we're going to have our meeting next week, and we can address our final number on the schools.
Would it take an additional meeting?
It would probably, it would need to take an additional meeting unless, unless we get some pretty clear direction on what a budget ordinance would look like, and then we could put it together. And you've got to have the budget ordinance in front of you as a written document before you adopt it by statute. We can't just say, make this change, make this change. So it would be a lot more beneficial for us to know exactly where you are, unless you wanted to spend another 30, 45 minutes while we put that document together while you're sitting here. Probably not the best use of your time. But, but either way, we're, you know, we're happy to, we're happy to put together our draft and then fill in some numbers if we need to, as Anita almost falls out of her chair back there. But we can try to work however the board needs us to work on that.
Well, since, since we had votes on the other two, as it related to the expansion, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion that we cut the current expense for the school system by 180,000.
And leave capital expenditures alone?
Yes, and the reason, the reason I'm kind of withdrawing from that is in talking with Anita and Brian, they were surprised at the number that we got in for the month of April, I mean, month of March, as it related to the sales tax. Then also, it was published last week, I think it was, maybe Friday, the prediction, well, not prediction, this is the final number now for the, for the whole country, the month of April, sales were only down 13 and a half percent or 13.6%. So the numbers are looking, hopefully, much better than what we anticipated.
I think if we cut our current expense and leave capital expenditures alone.
So just to reiterate that from Commissioner Waters, what we saw, we received sales tax numbers on the first of June, I'm sorry, last week, that told us what March numbers were. I think we talked a little bit about that. It was our second highest collection we've seen, the first highest being December sales. Probably some of that increase was due to panic buying in those last two weeks. The, the big box stores in Washington, Lowe's, Walmart, never missed a lick. And in fact, you'll hear them talk about corporate wide, how well their sales were going. So, yes, we did do very well. In 30 days, we will get April's numbers. April was a full shutdown. Again, the big boxes were still working. So once we see what April's numbers are, we'll have a little better confidence in what it's going and how it's going. So that's kind of, what we saw, what we saw in March overall statewide was down 7%. Of course, ours was up, but across the state in a whole, it was down 7%. So, but we still need that another 30 days to have more confidence, and we'll get stronger confidence as that moves on. So, thank you.
John? I asked, I asked the school district to provide us the prioritized list for capital. We have not seen that yet. So I'm not sure that I'd be ready to vote on a budget for them that we don't even know what they're going to spend it on. I mean, I agree with the other part of this completely.
Commissioner Richardson?
Well, you know, one thing you can do if you're, if you, if you're going to approve the budget is you can vote on a continuation budget for the schools until they provide the information, and then finalize their budget.
Well, continuation would probably give them what we originally budgeted to begin with.
Well, it's continuation in the sense that we're not finalizing this budget for them this year. It's not continuation in the sense that the legislature does a continuation budget, where they just keep rolling with it. It's continuation until they provide us with the information.
Commissioner Waters?
So you're saying on, on the capital, you want them to highlight on the capital list that they provided to us because that was like $5 million?
Yes. Last year, they prioritized. The list they gave last year had a priority. I mean, it, it didn't prioritize 1 through 100, but it said this item is a priority. And those, they completed most of those. But Anita, aren't they carrying over to, as right now, isn't the fund balance in the capital 238,000?
Right.
Okay. So I know, do we know what the fund balance was the year before?
Not without going back to the numbers.
Okay. I'm just wondering if they've underspent what we gave them last year by 238,000.
You know, one of the things you need to think about is the buildings that they're using, because I understand that there's a move to move back into this old Ed Tech building over here, and that means spending money. So you need to ask them for, you know, what are you spending money on? Are you going to use that building anymore? Because they told us they'd moved out of it.
You heard they were going to move back? What were they going to, what are they going to do?
I have no earthly idea, because the schools they have now, except for Washington High School, are half-empty. So why would they move back into it at all?
Brian, have you heard anything like that?
Well, they're, they're still using, if I understand it, the area where I'm sure everybody's been to, where we've had some dinners and meetings.
Media Center.
Yeah, the media center. And then I understand there's some offices maybe that are being used out there. I, I think to give some guidance, I mean, I'm, I'm ready to vote, and that's why I went ahead and made the motion on the current side. I mean, this is just giving guidance to our manager and our chief financial officer. So I'll keep that and see if there's a second.
Second.
Be sure what we're doing here. We're, we're giving guidance to prepare the budget ordinance for approval. Is that correct?
Yes.
Just on the current part. We still, still can adjust that if you, if you see fit. Commissioner?
John? John, do you, do you have, did you want to say anything?
I'm not really sure what that means. Help me.
Well, I, I understand that you want them, you want to see a list, you want to see the priority, but I think at the end of the day, you're probably going to still support the capital budget. Or do you think you would cut the capital budget? Or increase it? I mean, that's.
I don't think there'd be a chance we'd increase it. But we could potentially, if they're, if they've got 240,000 in fund balance in the capital, and that's left over from last year, then I don't know that we wouldn't, that we wouldn't expect that they, we could cut it. I mean, if they're not spending the money. I, I know that they've got the priorities, and if they can spend their capital monies primarily on items that are going to get fuel efficiency and reduce their costs going out, then that's a plus for everybody. But if they're going to spend it a lot on painting, you know, that type of stuff, then that's not as beneficial to the overall budget.
It would be a benefit to the board what we could do is ask for that information. I think our number, what's our capital number?
What's our capital number for the schools?
Yes.
It is $1,115,695.
So based on that, we can ask them for that current, unless the board has an idea that you want to change that. If you hold them flat, we can ask them to give us that rank priority and give you the projects that they will spend that capital money on, so that you'll have those projects, you'll know what those projects are, and then we can work the budget ordinance out based on that, because, because that's really not going to change the budget ordinance. If the number's the number, it just, you could say, I'm, we're only going to give you this amount, and then I don't like your priorities, why don't you do this one? You're just moving priorities, you're not changing the number. So we could certainly set the budget for you.
Mr. Manager?
Yes, sir.
If we hold them flat, we don't need a priority list. I, I mean, I don't think we do. I mean, if we just hold them flat.
Obviously, that's a policy decision by the board that I don't.
I mean, I, I think it's good to have the priority list, because I don't know about you, Commissioner Booth, but I get asked by citizens all the time, you know, what are they spending the money on? And I hate to say I don't know.
Well, Mr. Walls, that's a smart answer is that you don't know. You should tell them, ask the school board now.
And I do.
I mean, honestly.
And I do.
That's a smart answer.
And I do. And I do.
Commissioner?
Well, the smart question in all of this is, what did you spend the money on last year? And let's see last year's list, because what typically, what has always happened is, they've told you they're going to spend the money on one thing, and then they went and spent it on something else.
Well, I've looked at the list compared to this year, the last year, and the stuff that was a priority last year is not on this year's list. So I'm assuming they went ahead and took care of it.
Well, that can be an erroneous assumption, because we paid for fixing a roof like seven years running, and the roof never got fixed, and it was still a complaint. So you need to ask, what did you actually spend the money on last year? And give us your priority list for last year, which we should have somewhere. We should pull our own priority list, not the one they give us.
I think in going back to the school system, we need to ask what Commissioner Richardson said. Tell us what you spent the money on last year, and how did you come up with the capital of 238,000 left over?
Yeah.
And that'll show it.
Yeah, yep, that's true.
That'll show it, as well as what the priority is for this coming year. Well, that'll cover all three items.
Anita, the fund balance you pulled for capital was based on 18, 19 audit?
Right, as of June 30th, 2019.
Okay, so we don't necessarily know what they've done this year.
It could have been accumulation of 10 years in small amounts.
Doesn't he know?
Don't they know what the fund balance is right this second?
Um, that's difficult to gauge until you have your final audit numbers in and know your actions for the year, and then you know how your fund balance is going to fall out. That can be hard.
You can't, you don't have a running total, so you don't know when you're going to run out of money? I would think you've got to have some sort of a running total.
Well, you can have a running total through today, but you kind of need to project what you're going to spend through the end of the year, or it could be accurate.
I understand that, but I meant as of today.
Yes, they would have that.
Commissioner Rehboz, I can understand your position where you started from, but $230,000 is not a lot of money in that capital budget. I mean, that's not even one project. And I understand your point now.
It's 25 percent of the budget.
Yeah.
Would you repeat your motion, Commissioner Waters?
Okay. Based on using the ADM reduction of $302,000, and then adding back the consumer price index, $120,000, I would recommend that we cut the current budget for 20, 21 by $180,000.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? You know voting stand?
I do.
Okay, it's 4-3. I'm 4-2. Yeah, the motion passes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
One of the things that we've talked about on the budget, and we never did take a vote on it, under the solid waste enterprise, the manager's recommendation was an increase of $5, and I would like to see us increase that to $10, is because, you know, ever since we've had the enterprise, we've not been able to accumulate money in the fund to make repairs to our convenience sites. We're always coming up, being squeezed, and with no funds available. And the $5 increase is going to do the same thing. It's not going to generate the money based on the amount of solid waste that we're creating in Beaufort County. It seems like we're doing more and more every year. So my recommendation and my motion is, is that we increase the fee by $10, which would be to $165,000. That's my motion.
Is there a second? I'll second the motion. Discussion?
Yeah, I think increasing another $5 is just another tax. And I know solid waste is one of the most important things we do, is one of the things we should do as a county. But I would suggest we go back to the commissioners and ask for that money if we need to. It can be done. Do it right now, budget. But I think once we increase it, we're going to continue to increase. And I'd rather go back to the budget and take it away from something else, since it is more important than a lot of other things we do. For sure.
Can we do that with an enterprise fund? I mean, you voted it in as an enterprise fund.
We can find it. We can contribute to it. You can do it.
Brian?
If the board would want, I mean, I think in the enterprise fund, in the solid waste enterprise fund, you've got certain items in there that I'm not sure you can cut if you're looking to do that. What you would probably need to do is make an interfund loan, like you did before, from the general fund to the enterprise fund, which you can do. That means the enterprise fund has to pay that money back. Either, well, you can either give it to them, or you can make them pay it back. If you make them pay it back, you've still got to eventually find a new revenue source for it. If you don't make them pay it back, you're back in the same situation we were 15 years ago, where there was a tremendous amount of subsidy from the general fund, general tax dollars, to an enterprise fund, which is why we pulled that away and said, "An enterprise fund is a standalone fund that should pay it some way instead of using general tax dollars to supplement it."
I think Stan's suggesting that, though, aren't you? You're talking about saving money out of the general fund, some place to pay...
Go in there and take some money from charities, for example.
That's not general fund.
That is general fund. It is. There's a variety of places you could put it.
Good, Brian.
Well, and just in general, I think that if, I think you put yourself back in the position where we were several years ago, where we didn't want to be, where you end up using general fund revenues to supplement an enterprise fund, and you're using general tax dollars to do that. So the general public who is paying tax dollars is, those funds are being used to supplement solid waste when it's a different, it's a different fund, and it's a different revenue stream. But that's a policy decision of the board. There's a way to do it, we've done it before. It's just however the board wants us to do that.
Mr. Chairman, this is not a tax. It is a user fee. If you take trash to the convenience site, you're using that facility. And right now, we have 23,000 parcels that are paying that fee, and we have a total of 44, if I remember, thousand parcels total in the county. I do not like the idea of going back and taking money, even in the form of a loan, or trying to find some money to offset that. I think that should be paid by the people who use it every week, and some of them two or three times a week.
Any more discussion? Yes.
The manager presented in his budget a $5 increase. You asked him for additional $5 to do construction work. How much would that additional $5 put in the budget? Now, what can we fix with $116,000?
My concern is, is that, is it because of what you're seeing, I mean, with the economy like, even with the economy like it is right now for the last two months, there's just more stuff going in there. I'm not even sure that $10 is going to generate any money for making improvements.
That's my point.
Making improvements.
That is my point. And the thing about it is, we've got a solid waste committee. What are they doing? I mean, we're just charging people money, charging people money, don't know what we're going to even do with the money. I mean, you see where I'm coming from?
We have a contract, but we pay more money every time there's an additional tonne that goes.
I understand that, but we also got a committee that's looking at reducing those, doing something to reduce those tonnages. Am I correct? Or close some of the sites, am I correct?
We've not got to any decision at this point in time.
I got you.
The chairman is sitting right next to you. He may want to add something as it relates to where we're at.
Well, you know, in terms of tonnage, you can close all the sites you want, you're still going to have the same amount of tonnage.
Yes, you are.
Yeah. So it's, and if the enterprise fund is just to do the roll-off sites, and solid waste is a lot more than just the roll-off sites in Beaufort County, it's dealing with solid waste. And I would love to see that tonnage number go down. I think we Americans waste way too much. But that's another issue for another day. It's a pretty complicated issue, trying to decide how we can help Beaufort County by influencing people to use less packaged products, because that's where our problem is, is the packaged products. And a lot of these materials are just going into the ground, and we don't know if it'll ever be anything but taking up empty space, or otherwise would be a landscape of splendor and natural beauty.
Commissioner Rehboz?
If we were to keep it at $5 and we go in the hole, then what do we do?
We've got next year's budget. So what if then?
No, what if we go in the hole starting in, before this year's over, before 2021 is over?
The general fund would have to make a transfer or a loan.
Okay.
And you can do that in time, actually, but if you do that too many times, the local government commission's going to be writing a letter about it. Because when you establish an enterprise fund as an enterprise fund, you're saying, "We're going to operate it like a business." And that means that we're going to set our fees or our rates at a level that they need to be to support the expenditure side. Or either you're going to cut the expenditure side if you don't have the resources to support it. And of course, you know, that's the challenge, there's really nobody to do that when the tonnage is going like this.
Commissioner Waters?
Well, I guess the people that expects us to make improvements to the convenience site, that they'll just have to wait another year if you guys are not willing to spend, well, I say not willing to increase it. So I withdraw my motion, and I'll just tell people that we chose not to make any improvements. We're keeping the fee as low as possible, so we will not make any improvements. Pardon?
You win that vote. Keep the vote out there. You've got a second. We've had discussion.
Commissioner Richardson?
Since you brought it up, what is the status of the funding for the site at Sidney Crossroads? It's not in this budget? Gee, if I, gosh, you really, you really need to do something, because you're going to have a lot of unhappy people. You already have a lot of unhappy people.
Well, and this is not, even the $5 increase is kind of catching up, and we're just going to break even. We're not going to have any money in there to offer any improvements. And I, you know, I get complaints almost on a weekly basis about older people having to climb up those salt-treated timbers down there.
Commissioner Richardson?
Mr. Manager, do you have a feel for what that site might be proposed at, at Sidney Crossroads? What the cost might be? Just, I'm not going to hold you to it.
Actually, as I recall, it was near about $1 million when they looked at constructing a new facility, mounded, whole nine yards. It was right at $1 million, I believe.
We were going to acquire some property and do a buyout on some wetlands for that too, weren't we?
There were some issues with some things, that they were claiming wetlands. I think we were able to put it on there. We may have had to buy a little bit, maybe, but we never got the final thing on that from the core engineers.
Okay, well, yeah, we should have had that by now, from the core of engineers, if they were doing any kind of legitimate work at all. But from my position, we need to figure out how, in this budget, that we're going to fund the Sidney Crossroads roll-off site, because we promised those people in that area that we were going to do this. And we promised them that, what, Frankie, three years ago?
As a matter of fact, it was just before Christmas that Brian and I went down and met with the group. Of course, the decision had already been made at the time, but we were not going to purchase the additional. But we did agree to make some improvements to it. That's, you're absolutely right.
Well, I, as a commissioner, don't want to go through another year without some action on the Sidney Crossroads site.
What's your position? What you propose we do?
Well, I'm listening to you guys. I'm just listening.
Maybe you've got a good idea, we can follow you.
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that we go ahead and take a vote and see whether it flies or not.
Mr. Chairman, one word on that. If we're only going to raise $115,000, and we need a million to do the site, I mean, we need to, my big thrust on this is, how are we going to fund the Sidney Crossroads site? We need to go ahead and do it.
Brian?
Just to speak a little bit of that, Commissioner Richardson, I believe that was part of what the solid waste committee was charged with doing, to look at that and determine what opportunities they were. As I recall, the combination of those two sites was less than 5% of the tonnage in the county, and I think that's right, roughly.
Yeah, I think you're right.
And so that was the concern that was expressed, are you going to spend $1 million for less than 5% of the tonnage? Or are you going to do something different that either does like a container service, an individual container service at home, or you consolidate sites and big sites on each side of the river? And that's kind of what the solid waste committee was charged with looking at.
Well, once again, people in that area are very concerned about it. I hear about it myself every so often, and people are not happy with this. We need to get on our horse and get going with whatever we're going to do with this stuff.
Stan, you want to reconsider canceling the meeting? Solid waste.
We can meet in this month, I guess. I don't have a problem with it. Meet here in this room?
Yeah. Okay.
Do you want to go Thursday, or do you want to push it back a week? Or you want to just check it in tomorrow?
Would it be Thursday this week? How about Tuesday?
Tomorrow?
Are you okay with Tuesday? I got, Thursday, I got some stuff to do Thursday.
You mean next Tuesday? Next week?
Well, I can do it this Tuesday, or if you want to do it next Tuesday.
Tomorrow, if you do it tomorrow, I have to notice that it's...
Okay, got it, got it, got it, got it. All right, let's do it next Tuesday.
Motion on the floor, call for it.
Hang on a second, hang on a second.
That would be June 9.
How about Thursday? Is there any way to do Thursday next week?
July 11.
Yeah. Is that okay with everybody? Thursday, July 11.
Is that a call?
Yeah, is that okay? Great, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor of Frankie's motion of 165, please raise your right hand. All those opposed? 5-1, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes what I had on the budget.
So just to be clear for us, and where you want to take your next step? Do you want to meet again on your regularly, or your currently special call meeting, which is Monday night, this upcoming Monday night, a week from today? Do you want us to bring your budget ordinance back at that time with the reduction that you voted on, the increase, and flat on the capital? And tomorrow, we'll ask and try to get the priorities, the two questions you've asked. asked. I mean, we can, or, I mean, we can, we can build the budget ordinance and leave that capital number blank, if you want us to.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay, so we'll build the budget ordinance for you next week and we'll leave the capital number for the schools blank. We'll make sure we get the information you're looking for, and then you'll have that, and then we can fill that number in, and you can have a document you can put on.
Next question?
Yes, sir.
We're not changing capital.
Well, that was the question. That's why I asked.
Yeah, we're not changing capital.
I don't know that. I don't know that.
Oh, you don't know whether you want to change it or not? Okay.
I motion that we go ahead with budget ordinance, leaving the capital budget for the public schools blank.
I'll second.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Did you, did you raise your hand, Stan? Okay. Five, all opposed? Five, one.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, we're the item, Kay, item for decision, Brandon Hayes.
I saw him out front.
I have one, I have one question. Keith Kidwell will not be here tonight, will he?
He is, it's too late.
It's too late, it is. Hey, how you doing?
Good evening, commissioners. Tonight, I'm here to ask for your approval to advertise and hire for an inspector, one position. The inspector that held this job has resigned May 22nd, and his last day will be Friday, and that'll leave just me doing inspections for the whole entire county. So I'm asking for y'all to approve that a position.
Motion to approve.
Give us a second. Got a second? Discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Six, zero, motion passes. Thank you, Brandon.
He ain't going for it. He ain't going.
Okay, Corny, you can come up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. I have before you requesting two vacant EMS positions, and I would like to take a second. When I preach, I go back and watch my sermon, and I always pick up on something. When I watched my presentation last month, I caused confusion about EMS staff. And the truck that we had in service at the college is not extra full-time staff, that was overtime staff. And I think I caused that confusion there. So EMS-wise, we, we only have enough full-time positions to cover our current, current fleet or current shifts that go in place. We don't have any extra positions. So anytime I'm down a position, that means that position has to be filled with overtime. We do try part-time, we get about 20% in part-time, but it's, it's very difficult, it has to be with full-time. We, we had a reduction enforced last month by one, you allow me to fill that this month, we've had two, both moving to different types of jobs outside of the county. So I'm here before you now requesting to fill these two positions.
Question?
Yes.
That's, that's no additional cash, that's just vacancies.
That is correct, sir.
Motion to approve.
Give us a second.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Hey, Corny?
Yes.
If you're using overtime for those two positions at the college?
Right.
Can't you use overtime for these two positions and then close that one down?
So that one is closed down. We stopped it. That truck again was put in place for potential COVID response.
Right.
We utilized it for that. We didn't see a need in trend to continue that truck going, so we have since closed that truck down. It ended in May. Looking in EMS, the unique thing about EMS and a 24-hour shift, most positions, you take an eight-hour position, you save money by paying overtime versus a full-time position and benefits. Because of the 24-hour shift, it's actually backwards in EMS. If I may just throw some, some numbers for you. EMS salary plus scheduled overtime, which is mandatory overtime for the, to cover that shift, salary, overtime, and benefits for paramedic comes to be $54,532. If you break that down to an overtime paramedic, paying a paramedic overtime, it actually costs us $58,799, just paying overtime. So on two positions, we're saving $8,500 by filling the two positions with full-time. I know typically that would not make sense, but because of the 24-hour nature, it is backwards in the EMS position. So could we, could we take overtime and put in there? Yes, but I'm going to actually spend $8,500 more out of my budget in doing that.
So why, so why didn't we hire full-time people for the other positions then?
They were, they were temporary just for COVID response.
And they were funded by?
They were funded, they'll, they'll be reimbursed for protective measures through FEMA.
Okay, but your people now are working, what, one 24-hour shift and then they're off two?
Three.
They're off three.
Yes.
Is there a motion?
Yeah.
We got a motion in a second?
Yes.
All of those in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Six, zero.
Thanks, Chairman.
Do we want to take a short break or go ahead and get Martin up here? Your pleasure.
Let's take five.
Okay. You stand adjourned. I've seen a recent.
So we're here to hold a public hearing to receive comments on the proposed Economic Development Performance Grant to Project River Breeze under North Carolina General Statute 158-7.1. This was something we had about a month ago, but the project has changed. As was said then, the River Breeze plans to expand a manufacturing facility into, to produce new air purification product lines with light assembly. The company currently plans to locate a facility, either an out-of-state location or Beaufort County. The state is providing incentives to compete with the out-of-state location. Since the public hearing on May 4th, the investment number has, has gone down to $2,100,000 for facility and $950,000 for equipment over five years. And the jobs have been reduced to 73 jobs, although the average wage is slightly higher because they're maintaining more of the skilled workforce. So the average wage is $39,651, and the county average wage this year is $38,000. It is proposed the county in coordination with the state incentives, offer the company an Economic Development Performance Grant estimated $85,000 to be distributed in the first five years of the project to locate its facility, equipment, and 43 full-time jobs in the county. The grant will require the company to achieve its capital and job goals, plus be current on all its Beaufort County tax obligations to receive the grant. The county intends to use general fund revenues as source of the funding for this project, and the public benefit derived from this project are increase in property tax and the creation of new jobs.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we move into the public hearing in case there's someone here to make a comment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is anyone here who'd like to speak?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second motion.
So you all received the abstract, so not to restate what I have just stated, the one North Carolina grant now will be $120,000, and the Community Development Building Reuse Fund will be $300,000, which is being offered, and there will be $43,000 worth of tiny funds from, through the community college. As I said, the plant, the company now plans to invest 2 million, 2.1 million in facility and $950,000 in equipment. The information is similar to what I just stated about the grant will be paid out over five years and that will require to pay all Beaufort County tax obligations, and the, and if the grants, if they do not achieve their goals, the grant will be returned to the county proportional to the number of jobs they do not create. The reason for the project reduction was the continuation of COVID-19 impact on the economy and the fact that the many operating rooms and similar facilities that use the HEPA filters, yeah, had been closed during COVID. So the company felt it was more prudent to expand about 25,000 square feet plant rather than the 40,000 that they had anticipated. So the difference in the investment numbers is not, well, it is quite a bit, I guess it's half a million dollars, $3,050,000 versus 3.6 million, and the jobs, 43 jobs at $39,651 versus 76 jobs at 300, oh, sorry, $38,224. Yeah, they still feel in the long run that the project will achieve those sorts of numbers, but they don't feel at this stage that they want to make too larger commitments to the, to the county. So the Beaufort County Economic Development Staff repress the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners vote to direct the county manager, economic developer, and attorney to work with Project River Breeze to provide an adjusted estimated $85,000 over five-year development performance grant to support with the aid of the North Carolina Department of Commerce and the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina and other economic development allies, the creation of 43 full-time jobs and an investment of $3,050,000. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that, that we take the recommendation from our economic development.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All of those in favor?
You got a question?
Go ahead.
Where are they going to locate here in Beaufort County? If they?
It will likely be in the industrial park.
Okay. So there'd be plenty of room to expand?
Yes.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All of those in favor, raise your right hand. All of those opposed? Did you, which one were you, Stan?
I raised my hand when everybody did.
Is it six, zero? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I think it will be an excellent project and will grow larger than what you just voted on. The next item I have is related to the Aurora Industrial Park, and it is a Duke Energy Site Readiness Program matching grant, although it's matched by an enormous amount of money. As you know, the Aurora Industrial Park is funded through Golden Leaf for $200,000 and North Carolina Industrial Development Fund, $750,000. And it is making slow and steady progress. Unfortunately, similar to I heard earlier about the Corps of Engineers, they haven't been able to come out on-site to do any of their evaluations of wetlands. So we've sort of ground to a halt there. But the town expects, once, once the corps is on-site, that they will be able to execute letters of intent from three companies that are interested in acquiring between 12 and 16 acres, representing approximately $150,000 of developed land purchases. Basically, Duke Energy has a program called Site Readiness Matching Grant, and they're offering $10,000 to be spent on engineering work to be conducted by the East Group in coordination with Golden Leaf and the Department of Commerce to install infrastructure in the Aurora Industrial Park. And speaking with Duke Energy, as long as the work is done, the engineering work, there is no clawback on the grant. They'd only claw it back if, you know, there was misrepresentation of what it was used for. So staff recommends the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners approve, the chairman to sign the, and the, I had the attached application in, in your packages. The attached Duke Energy Carolina Site Readness Program Matching Grant application for $10,000 to assist in the creation of the Aurora Industrial Park to curb the economic decline of the town of Aurora and southeastern Beaufort County.
Yes.
These are not matching funds?
They're matching about what's already been put in.
Oh, so nobody has to come up with any more money?
No, no more money. They're just, they call it that because if we didn't have all those other funds, yes, there would be match. But in this case, there's so much other funds that it's not needed.
Has this work already been done? Because he's got, no?
They've got.
He's had $30,000 worth of engineering work done, hasn't he?
They, we got $40,000 from Golden Leaf to start the engineering. So yes, but not this, this work could be for new work in addition. There's, there's about $113,300 worth of engineering work that needs to be done. So this will reduce that slightly.
Is there a motion?
I motion that we accept the economic development recommendation with regard to Duke Energy's $10,000.
All of those in favor, please raise your right hand. Six, zero. Motion passed. Thank you, Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I got to tell you, I was extremely excited to share with you the March sales tax numbers, and Brian just went and stole every bit of glory away from me. And so I won't have too much more, how about that? I did want to mention that we, when we received that March sales tax number last week, we did get an updated revenue forecast from the association for next year, and right now they're at 9.9% shortfall. And so when I went back and look at what we've got, and look at what we have programmed in the budget for next year, and it's 11.1. So I think we're right in line. Best guess anyway, for right now. The other thing I wanted to mention to you is the Executive Order 124 regarding the penalties, interest, and disconnection fees associated with water accounts, that was just extended another 60 days through July 29th. So I went back and I thought it would be good to look at, you know, what the impact on the water revenues have been thus far. And for this fiscal year, we can expect to lose out on $82,000 in those fees. Now, the good news is the water sales are through the roof, so I'm anticipating water sales to be about $175,000 over what was budgeted. So that more than compensates for the loss in the fees.
Anita, those folks have to eventually pay what they owe, right?
They have to eventually, well, we can't charge for the fee. So we charge for the usage, for the water usage, but we'll never recoup that actual fee, that is lost revenue.
Can we get in that money from Cares?
Not yet.
That's probably a.
That's the second pot of money potentially.
I'm just trying to get it, get rid of it.
And then the only other thing I had is that the local government commission did extend the audit deadline. It's now January 31st, and I'm even more ecstatic about that than I am the sales tax.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have to?
No, it's automatic. Not sure we'll use it, but I probably will.
The sovereign did it, you don't have to prove it.
Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is a public hearing on the return of Parch Retirational Trust Fund grant. As you recall, the county previously received a part of grant for phase two of the Wrights Creek project. That was to do some improvements there with picnic shelter, picnic tables on boardwalk and fishing, fishing pier. After we received the part of funds, we also received a grant from the North Carolina Division of Coastal Management to do a shoreline erosion control plan for the entire parcel. And that grant provided funds to study the entire shoreline of the parcel, but mainly focused on recommendations at the, to control erosion on the point opposite of the North Carolina Wildlife Resources Commission voting ramp area. When we. When we looked at that, the report was done, it recommended a riprap reventment in the estimated cost of about two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. Initially, our thought was that we may be able to use some of the part of money to do that erosion control piece. Obviously, there were not enough funds there to do that, and they have given us some opportunities for some additional funds to, or some additional grant opportunities to go after to see if we can get those funds for that. The problem we ran into was because of the timing, we obviously don't want to go out there and spend money on something before we're able to put that erosion control piece in. So due to the timing, we need to return these funds to the state. As long as we return them within the timeframe and explain this to them, there, there's no penalty to us, and we're still seen as in good standing with the state. If we were, if we do not do that, then they would essentially put us on a list that says you're not eligible for future grants under part of. So this is part of the requirement that you have. You have to have a public hearing to receive comments from the public on the recommendation to return the part of grants. So I'll answer any questions you have, and then you can open the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we open the public hearing to receive comments on the return of the Wrights Creek Phase Two grant.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? I would have another discussion. Is anyone here who'd like to speak for the public? Charlie, you want to talk about? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All of those in favor, please raise your right hand. Six zero. Did you vote six? Did you vote, yeah? Yeah, okay, okay.
I want to give the money back.
Okay.
What I was really thinking about, Mr. Chairman, is that we really need to put that property up and sell it and get out of this project. This is a bad idea to begin with. We paid four hundred thousand dollars for a dredge pond that was, wasn't worth fifty thousand dollars. And at the time we bought the property, I sat here and told you that the shoreline, that the Wrights Creek had washed up to the toe of the property, and that the dike around the property was failing, and you went ahead and bought it. Now you got to spend another two hundred and eighty thousand dollars to protect a four hundred thousand dollar bad judgment. As a business decision, I'll be bringing a motion at the next meeting that we abandon the Wrights Creek project and put the, put the property up for sale.
Can we do that?
Sure. If you get the votes.
Wait. I was just wondering, are there any covenants keeping us from doing it?
No.
I have to look at that, see, there is, I mean, there was state money involved in it as well, so we have to look at that.
Do you think the state, on the purchase?
Yeah.
You're better off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The next item you have is the, is the actual decision item on return of the parcel, the part of grant. Not to reiterate that, but there is a, there's the list of things we have to do on page 243. It is for convenience. We have to, you need to adopt the resolution on page 244 that says we're turning that money back in, that you've held a public hearing on it. We have the budget amendment that's attached that returns that money to the county, because we appropriated fund balance on the match. And so our recommendation to you would be to approve that, and we'll make the necessary documents available to the state to, to return those funds.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Discussion? All of those in favor, raise your right hand. Six zero. Motion passes.
The next item is the Mideast Planning Contract for Fiscal Year 2021. As you all know, we have, we engaged the Mideast Commission for Professional Services on our planning. This is the exact same contract we had in this current fiscal year, 1920. It has a forty-five day termination clause for any reason, and it will not exceed sixty thousand dollars. So the only thing that essentially has changed on this contract are the dates, and this puts us into play for fiscal year 2021. We recommend your approval.
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All of those in favor, raise your right hand. Six zero. Motion passes.
Thank you, Brian.
Mr. Francisco?
Yes. Please. Commissioners, we have five parcels here that we've received bids on. It's gone from three to five, I think, since the time we, we tried to get this in the book. And this afternoon, we received two raised bids further on this from the new page, which shows the five parcels. The first one, which is Reed 21173, you see there, Richland Township, that's been raised from two thousand to three thousand. The second one, which is Reed 26173, Old Blunt's Creek Road, Chaco Winity, is, has been previously bid in at twenty-five hundred, or we're holding a deposit on that. The third one, 15666 in Richland Township, that bid was raised from a hundred dollars to a thousand dollars today. And then 41725, Old Market Street, Washington, that bid is a hundred dollars, and Marseau Street, Richland Township, 24103 Reed, is fifty dollars. Those bids are to you for approval. They'll be the minimum bids. They'll go from there if they're raised. Otherwise, that's, that's what they'll be.
So this is a beginning, starting point?
Assuming that there are further bids, but I suspect these two, since those guys are kind of battling back and forth, it'll probably go a little bit.
Yeah, see that.
Mr. Chairman, I, I move that we start the, the process for these five parcels.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All of those in favor, please raise your right hand. Six zero. Motion passes. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
We're down to items for discussion. Commissioner Richardson?
Well, I hope this is a little more than discussion. It's recommendation that we, we proceed in a certain way. There's, this shutdown, lockdown of industry, people, and everything else, the, the financial results from this have, are not even being seen yet. A lot of people have suffered, a lot of businesses have suffered, governments are going to suffer. It's, in my opinion, a violation of our constitutional rights. It's the first time in the history of the world that we have ever approached a infectious disease by not quarantining the sick and quarantining the whole public. It's, it's, it is, it was a reckless act, in my opinion, on the part of the governor. And I would like for us to direct our attorney to take a look in the next month at how we might go about recovering some of this money, which would involve a lawsuit to, to the governor, against the governor, for damages, not only for the taxes that we may have lost, but for the revenue that individuals in the county may have lost as a result of this. Now, I think that this, this is an awfully important thing in seeing to it, that we never again have an abuse of government as severe as this has been.
David, can you take a look?
Certainly take a look at it. That's what it's asked for here to, to discuss it at the next, next meeting. I would just, just point out that the request here to recover personal income losses in the form of damages, I, I think that's stretching a bit, or quite a bit, from, to what, what this, these commissioners, what this commission should do. And the idea of tax loss damages, I think it got a potential of future loss damages, but I don't know if there's any damage right now, as long as, because the county's got a way of getting, getting their taxes back. And so I, I just think these are really going nowhere, but I'll be happy to take a thorough look at it.
Well, I, I realize this is a long shot, and I'm not necessarily limiting you to any way that we can recover damages to, that any citizen of Beaufort County has suffered in any way, or that any government in Beaufort County has suffered in any way, or any other individual has suffered in any way, by any means whatsoever. I think you should take a look at how we might be able to approach that. Admittedly, it is, is, is a different idea, but we have been abused by an elected official, and we're entitled to compensation for that abuse.
Thank you, Dave. Sam?
If, if nothing else, we're, we were acting as a friendly political body to the public, and maybe that will make a difference in they, and maybe if a class action lawsuit were to ensue outside of us, because it might be difficult for us to collect for the, for the rights of the public. However, if we act as a friendly public body for their, their, their record, that may make a difference.
Well, I, I agree with you, Stan, but I think the attorney should take a look in addition to that. We can always become a friendly party to a suit that anybody brings, but I think he should take a look at how the commissioners might be able to spark something to get something going.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Commissioner Richardson, Brenda Hamilton investigation?
Well, okay, I, my only question is this, what's the status of the samples, and just where are we with this thing?
So I had reached out to the sheriff's office regarding that and was, got a return email from Lieutenant Van Landingham, and his, his comment was that the evidence had been returned by FedEx. That was on Friday, the fifteenth, about close of business, and it had to be catalogued and entered back into the sheriff's office evidence system. And then once that was done, he was going to contact Ginger Clark at the University of Florida, who is the technician that we had spoken with, about getting that process set up to send that evidence to them. So unless there's additional information from Chief Deputy Rose, that, that's what I know at this point in time.
I bet they have spoken. We are still working on, we already had the evidence catalogued, but there were changes for Microtrace, just because they actually developed evidence that we didn't have before. So making sure the file is complete and making arrangements with the University of Florida so that you get the entire case file.
You think that'll be going out in the next week or so?
It's really, at this point, it's, it's, we're going to be finished pretty quickly. And at that point, it's all in the hands of the University of Florida, when they're going to take the supership out. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Waters?
Just, just for your benefit and the public, on May the 21st, at approximately eight fifteen, I got a call from one of our citizens on Punga Creek Road that in, in their yard, a large animal appeared to be like a large-brained cat with a tail, was walking away with their, one of their house cats. They asked me what I should do, or what they should do, and I said, call 911 and have it documented. It's been documented, and a follow-up with the North Carolina Wildlife Commission. And I would suggest that any time we, we receive those, that we have it documented, because I'm convinced that we have a brown cat in Beaufort County. And the only way we're going to do it is to start asking the public to confirm that and ask them wildlife to follow up. Thank you.
What is a brown cat? Like a bobcat?
It's bigger than a bobcat. Supposedly, the rumor, and I say rumor because that's all it is, during the Brenda Hamilton investigation, several people believed that the U.S. Fish and Wildlife has brought three, what they call brown cats, Florida cats, up here. And here again, it is nothing but a rumor, but I'm convinced, based on calls and people's conversation, that we have something as bigger than a bobcat and is capable of killing animals, and I'll leave it at that. I've not seen one.
Is it related to the panther, or?
I would say that this one is right close to North Island High School, so that would be probably something like a panther.
Well, there were, in the investigation, there have been comments about certain tooth marks in certain places on both the neutrino and Mrs. Hamilton, that they have not been identified, but some people say that the teeth marks are far enough apart that it wasn't a wolf or something like that, it had to be a cat. So the, the, things are moving, nobody knows, let me emphasize that. I'm not saying one way or the other. I'm just presenting what I, what evidence that people are giving to me. So what Frankie's reported is, is interesting.
One night, Hood and I were coming back from, I think Hyde County. Can you hear me?
Is your mic on?
Yeah, it's on, I think. One night, we were coming back from Hyde County, and it was a little bit, it was misty, raining, and right about north side, something darted across a road going about fifty miles an hour. Now, no dog can move that fast, and it was big, and it wasn't a bear. And I said something to you, Hood.
Yeah, I remember that.
I said, that's, that's a, that's a giant cat. So it could be, you're saying a brown cat has been introduced into our, our wildlife, our environment?
Let's just say there's a rumor to that effect. The only thing I can tell you is the lady that called me was almost in tears. She would, really didn't know what to do.
Wow.
And, you know, it would, it would be nice if we had a video or some photograph. That's, I'm convinced, that's the only way we're gonna, we're all gonna believe that, is for us to have some verification. And what I, what I'm stressing to the public is that if you see something like that, let's document it, where it was at, time of day, that sort of thing.
Charlie?
I will say that, I note for a fact that Van Landingham has called, with the folks in Florida, and has got guarantees that they're going to have all of the DNA markers for the dead cats that are known, so they can test against anything that's found, whether it's there. That's a question that's been asked up until this point. There's been, Western Carolina didn't have that. A Microtrace, of course, does, University of Florida has those markers to test.
Thank you, Charlie. Commissioner Richardson, the jail population and staffing, I know Christina went over there a little?
Yeah, I think that we've, I think we already have our answers on that. I, I don't see any point in laboring on it unless somebody else has a question.
We're good? Anita, did you, did you mention something about revising the budget with, you mentioned something at, about some people, or did I misunderstand?
Jared?
Hang on a second. Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to make sure I was really clear on what I needed to do to prepare the budget ordinance for Monday night. And there had been some discussion during our budget sessions previously about limiting or noting in the budget ordinance the personnel count for the departments. And so I was just questioning whether I needed to do that or not, since there had been some discussion about it. I wasn't sure.
Thank you. John?
I think at our, one of the budget meetings that we had, that was pretty much agreed that that's what we wanted to do, was to include the head count in the ordinance.
Okay.
But we talked about the head count plus the classification of the employee as giving the, would be the operations base. the, would be the operations basis for a department during a year.
We did, but I think that what we agreed upon was just the head count.
That's what I understood, is that we would put in there, I was looking for the exact number, a total of 381?
By department.
Does that include the addition that Health Department wanted?
So I motion that we amend the instructions we'd given you previously on the budget to include that the head count by department be included in the ordinance.
Yes, please.
I know that last year with the sheriff's office, you allowed him to do, you limited him for the total three divisions. You didn't tell him per division, the head count. What's the direction on that for next year, please?
The direction on that is it's by the total department. You can't tell him what he needs to do.
Okay, I forgot, so I'm.
Well, that all may be true, but, you know, the dispatching division can be lifted away from him. It was there only by our agreeing to do that, and at one time, this board had decided to do that. So, you know, Brian, you and I totally disagree.
You could do that, but the thing with that is the sheriff is still going to want his telecommunicators dispatching his folks, and it's a lot easier to let him do it all than it is to pay one.
Commissioner DeTheridge?
Hood has already spoken to this issue a little bit tonight, about the governor, and how our state has been shut down for going on almost three months. It started back on a Saturday, right, I believe it was about the 8th of March, when he shut down the schools for two weeks, did it unilaterally without the consent or the concurrence of the council of state. After that, it was just a rolling, cascading authoritarian closure parade, closing one thing or another, designating what is essential and what is nonessential in an arbitrary and willy-nilly fashion. Still, Beaufort County is not fully open. There are a lot of businesses that don't know if they'll ever come back. It's estimated that 25% of all small businesses will never ever really fully open again to a point and stay in business. If they do come back, a lot of them will be like zombie businesses. We had a chance to, and we started talking about it in April, that it was an imprudent action by the governor. In May, we had an opportunity to vote for a resolution brought to us by Commissioner Richardson, which failed 2 to 5. Now it's June, and we're still not open. We talked about, we'll be open by June. We're not open. We're not fully open. There's a lot of people still not open. And I think we're in a process where the governor does not want to relinquish control, even though he's beginning to lose lawsuits after being sued. Churches are now opening up, which a lot of us who know the Constitution knew that that was a complete and utter violation of the First Amendment. So, one of my constituents, Steve Rader, had brought to me a very well-written resolution, which not only looks at opening Beaufort County, but to never put ourselves in this position again. In other words, if we get, in lieu of the General Assembly tightening down on the general statute that provides for the Emergency Powers Act, until that happens, we would look at each Emergency Powers Act and decide whether there's validity to it before we allow our county to be part of that authoritarian construct. And that's what this resolution speaks to. And I'm going to read it to you, and I want you to consider it, not only for now, but for future, until the General Assembly has a chance to go through and make some changes to the general statute that provides for the Emergency Power Act. Understanding, I want you guys to understand, the governor has no constitutional right to have done what he has done, okay? The only right he has is through a general statute. And the North Carolina General Assembly was out of session when he did this, and he did it rather quickly. And the only way they could come back into session before April the 28th was for the governor to call them back into session. Not only did he not want to concur with the council of state, he didn't want the General Assembly back in Raleigh with all this going on for about a month and a half. So whether this was oversight on his part, or he wanted to unilaterally be in charge in a complete authoritarian construct, that's what happened. And businesses and people in North Carolina have suffered tremendously. And I'm, and a lot of other people may acknowledge that some good did occur from this in order to flatten the so-called curve for the coronavirus, but more damage, far more damage was done than what we gained. Okay, so I'm going to read Steve's well-written resolution. Resolution declaring Beaufort County a sanctuary county to the lockdown, I think. Is that, is that the way it is? I think I had a different title, but that's fine. Whereas multiple counties and cities in multiple states around the country have allowed businesses to reopen in defiance of the state governor's lockdown orders through action of county commissioners, sheriffs, district attorneys, mayors, and/or city councils. And whereas the only state Supreme Court to have heard a case on governor's lockdown orders, the Supreme Court of Wisconsin struck down that lockdown order as an abuse of power. And whereas a federal district court judge in North Carolina has issued a temporary restraining order against Governor Roy Cooper's lockdown order on churches, admonishing the governor that there is no pandemic exception in the U.S. Constitution. And whereas Governor Roy Cooper has failed to secure the required concurrence of the NC Council of State for his executive orders restricting private citizens and businesses due to the coronavirus outbreak, rendering them void. And whereas Article 1, Section 7 of the North Carolina Constitution prohibits suspension of laws without consent of the General Assembly, and does not allow suspension of the Constitution itself at all. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Beaufort County Commission declares Beaufort County to be a sanctuary county for business, where Governor Cooper's executive orders 118, 129, 121, 131, 133, and 135 shall not apply. Be it further resolved that no resources of Beaufort County, including but not limited to personnel, facilities, equipment, vehicles, and other properties, shall be used in any fashion to enforce or provide surveillance for Governor Cooper's executive orders 118, 120, 121, 131, 133, and 135. And be it further resolved that the Beaufort County Commission calls upon Governor Cooper to comply with the Emergency Management Act to confer with and obtain the necessary concurrence from the North Carolina Council of State for any further executive orders be he may attempt to issue during a state of emergency, as that act requires for orders restricting private citizens and businesses. That's it. Again, I think we may have spoken to this. I'm going to speak to it one more time, and then you guys open up to the floor and let you guys say whatever you want to say. But the Emergency Powers Act was never meant to go on for three months. It was meant to be done during hurricanes and tornadoes and things like that. And I stated before, the governor had a lot of control during the Civil War. Well, our Constitution was written after the Civil War, okay? After Reconstruction. So all the Civil War days are over. This is a whole new North Carolina, and the governor does not have the power to do what he has done. And the General Assembly now is working on, and we're going to speak to this a little bit later, and I wish Keith Edwell would have been here tonight, because he's part of working on the process to limit the governor, okay? So, of course, you know, the governor can, if they limit the governor, he can veto the bill. Then it becomes a political issue, and he's up for reelection. Always becomes a political issue, and that's what it is. It's a political body, it's a political state. They're the head guys in the state, and we're the lower echelon. But we're saying, we're not going to follow unconstitutional orders anymore. I'm done.
Yes.
Before I second this motion, I have a question. Frankie, don't you have a resolution that's supposed to come up tonight? Is it going to come up, or are you waiting on that?
No, that's the last item on the agenda.
I don't see it on my agenda.
It was, it's the one that was laying in front of, right in front of me. It's not in the notebook.
It's not in the notebook. All right, well, we'll discuss the issue of that when we get to it. But what I want to point out before I second this motion is, what I want to point out before I second this motion is that there's nothing wrong with voting for both of these resolutions, because both of them effectively do the same thing. So with that, I'll second Stan's motion.
Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, when I read this, I, I'm a simple person, and I really don't like it, or don't like it when, you know, somebody writes something from the legal point of view on every word, so to speak. I don't like the word "sanctuary." It makes it sound like that we're encouraging people to move across county lines and put their headquarters here. Just one thought. Huh? Just one thought. You know, most of these things have already happened. You know, there is a movement to try to change future powers under the executive order. I will not support this in lieu of the resolution I have later.
Discussion?
Okay, well, nobody else has said. Commissioner Waters, I fail to understand how you can expect us to support your resolution when you refuse to support the same thing. I think you're playing politics with this particular issue, and that's disgusting. It's been up time and time again, and you brought this, you brought your resolution in on Friday afternoon after all of the items for the agenda were supposed to have been submitted by like Monday or Tuesday so that they could be in the book. So one of the ways to look at this is you're out of order in what you brought in, so you are playing what I call backstabbing politics.
Mr. Chairman, I would just call your attention. I think it's just courtesy, when you've got a resolution of this much merit, that it's not shared with the other commissioner in advance of it being in the agenda. When I picked up my agenda book is when I decided that I would come up with my own, so I take issue with that. Other people, other people have got, have added stuff to the agenda, so I feel like I'm entitled to do it. I'm not going to vote for this one, but I'm also going to vote for mine. So you can call it any way you'd like.
Well, I'm not going, probably not going to vote for yours unless something earth-shattering comes about to change my mind, but I would ask the clerk at this point in time, what are the rules on getting items on the agenda? Do you want people running in there at 5:30 on Wednesday afternoon, or 8 o'clock on Thursday morning, when you're trying to put an agenda together? My recollection of putting agendas together is you should have everything in before Monday morning, so that the clerk has time to assemble and do the things that she needs to do. And I think if we're going to get a good job of agenda preparation, that's what we should be doing. Now, I don't know where this is written at this point in time, but I've been sitting here for 23 years and six months or whatever, and that's the way that we've always done it. Commissioner Waters saw an opportunity with his little clique to backstab his fellow Republicans, and that's what he has done.
Mr. Chairman, I think Commissioner DeTheridge, did he not send one in today, Katie?
Yes, I did, and I thought we would have to vote on, excuse me, may I answer?
We approved the agenda. That's one of the first things we do, and we approved the agenda, which included both.
Exactly. But generally, what we do in the past is to vote on them. I was shocked when we didn't vote on these items that we were adding to the agenda. We voted for them in toto. We didn't vote for them independently, individually.
Well, Commissioner Waters, sauce for the goose, it's sauce for the gander. If you want to play these political games, what I'm saying to you far ahead of time, that if you play these political games of rushing in at the last minute with agenda items, is not wise, and it's not smart. But if that's the way this board wants to do business, then I'll be doing business just like you guys are doing business. I encourage the board to set up a rule for getting items on the agenda, out of respect for both the management system, the manager, and the clerk.
Mr. Richardson, you are so correct in what you just said, and we do have a policy about putting, getting them in a certain deadline. I was here when we voted on that policy.
Do you remember what I said?
I can't, I think you got it in before Tuesday or Thursday before. It's somewhere, I can't remember now, but we do have a policy. And in saying that, all of us, every single last one of us has violated it.
I have.
I have.
I have.
Come on.
You asked the clerk, "My stuff is in Sunday or at the latest Monday morning," because I respect the rules. And to say that I violated it is totally wrong, and you really need to take it back and know what you're talking about before you start talking.
I ain't going to take it back unless you come over here and make me.
Well, one of us is lying, then.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to solve this. I'm going to withdraw mine if Commissioner DeTheridge will withdraw his, and we'll develop a policy at the next meeting. I think it's great. I can tell you, as chairman, and I would think the president chairman, I have no problems, Commissioner Richardson, if we pick a date and we say Monday or Tuesday, and that's it. I'll support you on that. And I'll withdraw mine tonight.
Hold on a minute. Are you saying that we'll develop a resolution, say, in the next few days?
No, what he's saying is we will develop a policy for putting the agenda together at the next board meeting. That's what he's saying.
I don't want to withdraw this resolution.
Yeah, and if he was, he's asking you if you'll withdraw your resolution if he withdraws his resolution, and that's between the two of you to decide what you want to do.
Let me answer. Let me answer that, because I'm going to speak. I'm going to speak to the issue. Let me let them finish. Frankie, I am, regardless of how you vote on mine, I'm going to vote for your resolution. And I'll tell you why. I think it's important that Beaufort County opens. I thought it was important a month ago when Hood brought his well-written resolution, and it did have some legalese in there, but if I remember correctly at that meeting, you didn't feel right, that we were honoring the legal, our legal duties, and the governor had a greater legal preponderance than we did to do what we wanted to do, which was open up Beaufort County. And you said your mother once told you, "Don't do things that are wrong," and you said it would be wrong for us to go against the governor. I mean, I don't see the difference between your resolution going against the governor tonight and then by tomorrow morning, and then me bringing in a resolution that's very well-written and states specifically that there are certain legal ramifications to what he did, and we have a legal leg to stand on to do what we should do. And that is pass this resolution tonight. And I think it's a little stronger than your resolution, and it gives us an opportunity to fall back to this position later, should this ever happen again, that, and we're asked to do something we shouldn't do in this county, and we will have this precedent, that on June 1, we decide, we said, "We're not going to listen to any more executive orders unless they're, we feel that they're constitutional." And we're elected to understand the constitutional, Constitution. We swore to the Constitution, so was the governor, but he has a problem with the Constitution on a lot of issues. I remember when he was Attorney General, he didn't feel like he wanted to go up and defend the state on a number of issues, because he said they were unconstitutional. And I'm thinking, God, he's having so many problems on the Constitution right now, on so many issues, and he's losing in court constantly as governor. Did he really know what was constitutional and not constitutional? Did he really know what was constitutional and not constitutional back when he was the attorney general? I would say he didn't.
Mr. Chairman, in lieu of time, I've changed my mind. I'm going to leave it in there, and I'm going to, because he's not going to withdraw his.
No, I don't think I should.
So I'm going to leave mine in there.
Because I'm going to vote for yours.
And I call for a vote on this one.
Okay.
I have something I would like to add.
Sure.
If you can hear me all right, I'll just hear it from here, so I'm going to throw a piece of wood into this fire. Let's see if we go in here. Let me point a couple of things out to you. Number one, I'm not ever going to say to you, yes, go on and do something that's going to get you in some type of legal trouble.
True.
Okay? So that's, in my opinion, that's where you are. When you say that I'm ignoring all executive orders, you are violating the law, okay? Now, it's easy to say, oh, he violated the law when he did this. I'm saying prove it.
We're violating his rules.
You can't say, you just can't take that position. Is there a lawsuit pending by the council of state, or any member of it?
There's a lawsuit.
And there hasn't been a lawsuit filed about that.
You're talking specifically to the council of state?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, you're saying that's the reason.
That's not, that's just one of the reasons. That's just, one of the reasons.
One of the reasons you want to do this. Okay? So number one, I would never recommend, recommend to you that you violate any law, and that's what, that's what the law says. You violate, you violate any of those laws, that is a class-two misdemeanor, which is more than 30 days, no more than six months.
And you're going to give that same advice to Frankie?
That's a class-one to anybody.
And we're going to hear that same advice when Frankie's resolution comes up?
I'm saying it all, okay? I was asked at one point, what type of thing can you get in trouble? What law are you talking about that you'd be violating? Well, there's always that. That's a, that's a class-one, class-two, class-three misdemeanor. This is a class-two misdemeanor, no more than 30 days' time in jail, and no more than six months, but more than 30 days. I also said, and I made the remark, that this comes off of close, and this may sound a little heavy, but it's insurrection, when citizens rise up against their elected government officials and refuse to obey the law. That's, that's the, that is the definition of insurrection. Now, and only I'm saying to you, there is a right way and a wrong way to do something, and doing it this way, it's going nowhere. Maybe it'll go somewhere, I don't know, but it is political. I mean, that's exactly what it is. Did we all forget that the Supreme Court voted this past Friday on a case, and if you read this case, and you see what John Roberts says about these type of things? So that was a 5-4 decision of the U.S. Supreme Court.
Wait till that next appointment comes.
So you need to read that, because in essence, it was a church case.
Yeah, I questioned whether or not he was a constitution.
It was a church case, but it's got that language in there about other things, about meetings, businesses, and that sort of thing. That was this past Friday.
I read it.
Yeah, I missed that one.
So I say that to you, that's where, and every one of these, that we're not going to be there and tell the public that they should, or should recommend to the public that they not encourage all remaining businesses to remain open on Tuesday, that's tomorrow. That's all the guy said.
So Frankie, it seems like I would be doing something wrong, and your resolution would be telling people to do something wrong, too.
Yeah, that's what he just said. I'm scared.
You're fighting?
Time to vote.
I'm keeping mine on the floor.
It's already been called.
Calling it doesn't mean you can vote. That's a debatable item. I don't think we should, you know, I'm going to give my speech with all due respect to the county attorney, because I gave it plenty of times when Billy was the county attorney. Lawyers give you advice. He told you exactly right. I'm never going to advise you to do anything that I think is going to get you into trouble, and that's his job, is to give us advice. We're dealing with a political issue that the governor has been very careful when he was interviewed, and I've seen him interviewed a couple of times. He's never said the law when he's referred to these things. He said the rules. Now, he made up his own rules, and we're entitled as elected officials to go against those rules, because that's the whole basis of democracy and free people, and we are a free people, although if we let some of this stuff stand, we're becoming a whole lot less free than we were before. So I intend to vote for Stan's thing, and I actually, like I said, earth-shattering thing, I may even vote for Frankie's.
Okay. All the...
John. Stan, there are four executive orders that are not listed in here that relate to the COVID.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Would you like to put those in?
I don't know. I'm just telling you.
Well, that seemed like a whole lot of executive orders to me. I mean, if you would like to, we could, it's kind of late tonight. Let's just go with what we've got.
We're making the point. It's making the point that's important.
Yeah.
All of those in favor, please raise your right hand. All of those opposed, raise your right hand. 4-2, motion fails. Okay, Stan?
Okay. Item next.
It's 8 o'clock, guys.
Okay. Okay, this is one that I got in to Katie today, because I had no idea this was going to occur until I saw what was happening over the weekend, and I was disgusted, especially when I saw what was happening in my birthplace of Raleigh, North Carolina, when they started destroying Hargit Street, and that started getting really close to home. And then today, after I'd written this resolution, I found out that they hit Greenville last night, and they're probably going to hit it again tonight. When I say "they," I'm talking about the miscreants that are anti-American and anarchists who are destroying property and destroying people's livelihoods wantonly. I hope this wouldn't happen in North Carolina. I see Charlie's not here. I wish he could be here at this point. But what I have written is a resolution which endorses the civil liberties of our citizens here in Beaufort County to own the very property that we tax and have the right to have protection for that property, and that by showing the public we have the resolve to understand that, and that we will stand behind the sheriff when, if, and when, in a prospective sense, he has the duty to protect people's property, that he should use all force necessary to do so, and we will back him 100%. And with that, I'll read the resolution very quickly. Beaufort County has resolved to protect the civil liberties of all citizens by enforcing all of our laws. Whereas Beaufort County citizens all enjoy the civil liberties of American citizenship purchased by the patriotism of our forefathers, guaranteed by our United States Constitution, and whereas Beaufort County citizens' civil liberties protected by our United States Constitution affords our citizenry the right to own property and therefore benefit from the liability of ownership, and ownership under tax lien, taxed with yearly demand for payment, and whereas Beaufort County citizens' purchase of that public protection of their property through the representative government's obligation to provide for Beaufort County Sheriff's Department to protect and serve its people, and whereas the wanton killing of Minneapolis citizen George Floyd by certain members of the Minneapolis Police Department, there has ensued peaceful protests that were quickly hijacked by a criminal element of hundreds of thousands of miscreants who are substantively discussed to be possibly financed, organized, and directed by anti-American anarchists who, under the guise of large-scale rioting, have destroyed and looted businesses across the United States, in many instances undeterred by local authorities nonexistent in many cases, and whereas Raleigh, the state capital of North Carolina, and far away from Minneapolis, Minnesota, has been attacked by anti-American anarchists for two straight nights, May 30th, May 31st, with many downtown businesses victimized by these thugs who hate America and its people, whereas Beaufort County Sheriff was elected to serve its citizens with the responsibility to protect property and preserve the safety of our citizenry. Therefore, let it be resolved that Beaufort County's commissioners are resolved to protect the civil liberties of all citizens by enforcing all of our laws, thereby promising the Beaufort County Sheriff, the commissioner's full support to employ all the rightful and swift force necessary to achieve that charge and to responsibly do so, thus prospectively restoring order from lawlessness should anarchist insurrection visit Beaufort County. Be it further resolved that Beaufort County Commissioners request that Beaufort County Sheriff have the ultimate resolve to plan for action to effectively stop any prospective lawless destruction and theft of property, to and including deputizing capable volunteers, requesting the National Guard, or any other feasible stratagem to quell any possible anarchist insurrection here in Beaufort County. Now, I just read something on the computer that's happened in the last hour. President Trump is going to call up the military and every state that does not use their National Guard very quickly, and now, to stop this. So we need to be ahead of the curve on this, and we need to take active, active, we need to be active and let the sheriff know, we're behind him 100%, and let him know, we expect him to protect the property in downtown Washington, and downtown Bell Haven, and where else it may happen. As you guys know, in a lot of cities, they let it burn. That's not going to happen here in Beaufort County, not under our watch, and that's, we have to show the resolve tonight. I'm just hoping you're as disgusted as I am from what we've seen.
We're about to say.
I yield the floor to...
Is there a second? Is it, is there a second?
I didn't hear a motion.
That is...
Have you made a motion?
Yeah, let's call it a motion.
The motion is a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
Discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
All right. Here again, there's some words in here that I just don't like. I can support everything in here except I see that it adds nothing to put in paragraph number four. I mean, politics are local, and so let's get it as local as possible and take out paragraph number four.
Well, that does actually show the context between what's happening, but if that will help you vote for this, I don't have a problem with it. It's not an important paragraph. All it does is show context.
That's why I want to take it out. I mean, it doesn't add anything to the resolution.
All right, I'm okay with that. I will amend my resolution for your vote.
I'll support it if you'll take number four.
You got it. Number four is gone.
I'll say it.
Discussion. All of those in favor, raise your right hand. All of those opposed?
Thank you. Can this go to Charlie, or it should go to the sheriff? Okay, the last two items, I was hoping Keith would be here, Representative Kidwell. The legislative process regarding North Carolina voting, we did some work last month, and we sent it up to Raleigh. Did we get any replies, Katie, from any of the representatives, our representatives, nobody? Well, work's being done up there, and I just talked to Representative Kidwell. He said it's a work in progress, and I've been keeping up with some of the current events coming out of Raleigh. What has happened is the State Board of Election has lost the first phase of this. They're not going to be able to get the absentee ballot like they want, which was to have either one or none signatories as witnesses on those absentee ballots, so that has pretty much lost. But what they're doing now is they're still writing new legislation that will possibly help with the coronavirus, but not surrender our voting rights to a point that there could be additional fraud. So, you know, it is a work in progress, but it looks like it's going in the right direction at this point, that we're not going to advocate to whatever group wants to make voting as easy as possible for everyone all the time, which, as you all know, that's where your fraud comes in. It's so easy. People will cheat in voting. We've all heard before, it's not who controls the votes, but who controls, controls the ballot box. Okay, the last item is definitely one I wanted to, there's a lot of work going into the Emergency Powers Act, and one of the representatives, along with Representative Speciale, is Representative Kidwell, and they'll probably still be in session, because we still don't have a budget from last year, so they'll probably still be in session when we meet next. So I'm going to continue item four to next month, Katie, and hopefully we can get Representative Kidwell here.
Say a word, Sam.
I'm done.
Okay. We're down to item 5. Commissioner Waters.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners, I put a handout earlier tonight in front of you, and it's titled Beaufort County Testing. On May the 18th, we had 627 total tests that we had done in Beaufort County, and the positive number was 33. And so the positive-to-test ratio at that point in time was 5.3%, and the reason I picked that date is that's 14 days ago, and as of yesterday, that positive test ratio was only 3.8%, which is one of the ratios that's been recommended by the Council of State and our governor in Raleigh as a number to watch, because the number of positive cases goes up as you increase your testing. So this is the, this is the sheet that I've been watching, and one of the reasons that I'm going to recommend this resolution, I'll read it to you, it's called Resolution to Reopen Beaufort County. Whereas on May the 6th, which was our last Commissioners' meeting, Beaufort County joined seven other counties in eastern North Carolina, sending a joint letter to Governor Cooper. It requested local authority in decision-making and to avoid being grouped in a broad-based, statewide decision-making model. As of this writing, we have not received a reply. Whereas there has not been an outbreak of COVID-19 in Beaufort County, as evidenced by the data, COVID-19 cases in Beaufort County have totaled, needs to be changed, to 37 with zero deaths, and according to our health director tonight, 35 recovered. Currently, the county has one active case, and he said tonight that was two, so that number needs to be changed. Whereas the Beaufort County Commissioners feel the universal application of the executive orders are not exactly, are exact and untold in necessary damage to the Beaufort County businesses and its citizens. Whereas Governor has ignored our plea to allow candidates to make their own decisions on reopening, as other states have done. Therefore, be it resolved, the Beaufort County Board of Commissioners encourage all remaining businesses to open, period, striking at the actual date. Mr. Chairman, I knew that we approved the resolution.
Is there a second?
I'll second it, because I'm going to vote for it, for two reasons. Let me tell you about those two reasons. Number one, Frankie, I believe in what you're doing. That means as soon as we take this vote, people can start opening it up.
No.
Yeah, that's what it says. And number two, I want to put you in a position where you can do something wrong, and don't feel good.
I really, I really don't think I'm doing anything wrong. What I want the public to understand and business owners is that if you hold any kind of a state license, you need to be very careful. You don't, you don't want somebody to come in and pull that state license because of the fact you opened. So I'm not asking any... of a state license, you need to be very careful. You don't, you don't want somebody to come in and pull that state license because of the fact you open. So I'm not asking anybody to, use your common sense and be smart about this. Don't jeopardize any state-issued license that you have, which would be the liquor license.
Then what are we doing? Are we standing behind these people that open up? Are we gonna back them? Or are we just saying, hey, you know, we're cheering for you?
Yeah, we're cheering. We're giving the support to open up.
That's not doing anything, is it?
Well, how are you gonna stand behind them? That's what you're doing.
Yeah, you stand behind them and say, mine would have stood behind them.
What are you gonna, what are you gonna accept for responsibility?
Yes.
What?
Otherwise, you're not doing anything.
Well, I'm not sure, that's what I'm trying to understand. What do you think? What do you mean? Are you gonna sue, are you gonna sue their legal defense?
My resolution would endorse, yes. Yes, yes.
You're gonna put the county in a position?
Yes, sir, 100%. That's what my resolution would have done. And I believe Hood's last month would have done that, wouldn't it? Yeah, I mean, you know...
No, yours wouldn't have done that.
It's a moot point now, I mean...
But you all voted against it. Why would you vote for this one, then? If mine, if mine wouldn't have done anything, why would you vote against mine but vote for his? Because I know you're gonna vote for it. That vote's already been prearranged.
Okay.
I mean, why? I mean, you see where I'm going with this? I mean, as a matter of logic, I mean, you would, you would think if mine wouldn't have that teeth, you would have gone with mine to, hey, it's another chair, we're cheering twice. Yay, you're 18!
Stan?
Basically, that's all you're doing.
Okay, why don't you just bring in a good resolution sometime?
Well, they're pretty damn good. I thought it was great.
Any more discussion?
I would just like to ask one thing, since we're gonna be working on rules for the agenda of the next meeting, that the clerk be asked to locate the rules that we presently have and bring those, make sure those are in the book for the next meeting.
Good idea.
Right, I second it. You're not gonna stand behind the citizens. You don't wanna stand behind them.
I'm not gonna recommend that we pay any legal fees for a small business owner.
What are we doing here?
We're encouraging...
You, I don't know, how would, how would you put the county in a position of openly saying, if anybody is sued here, we'll take over your defense?
Let me tell you what the problem is. The county is incurring more damage by staying closed than any legal fees we would ever pay.
Don't you think the individual business owner can make a decision?
No, because government has screwed him. Government has to save him.
He can't, holy cow!
Yes. Oh, yeah, holy cow. That's the way I feel about it.
That's a new tack.
Well, yeah, I guess what I'm saying is we need to correct the, this honorable way an authoritarian governor acts.
Okay, so if you give them permission to do that?
Yeah.
Okay, can't they make their own decision out there? Can't the businesses, don't you believe that they're smart enough to look at the situation and say, "Okay, I own a bar, I'm gonna go ahead and open?"
Just go, "Yay team." Yay team. Otherwise, you're not doing anything.
Sure you are.
No, you're not. What are you doing?
You're allowing them to make their own decision.
They have that anyway.
No, they don't. Not right now.
Yes, they do.
Okay.
They have their own, they can, if we're not gonna stand behind them, they can do whatever they want, anytime they want. We're not gonna prosecute them. We're not at that point. We're not the guys that have to go out there and do that.
I would never, if I'm here, never allow the county to take open, assume openly for any possible expenses like that going on.
Even if it's unconstitutional, closing down businesses.
That's not got anything to do with what I'm talking about.
It does, in my opinion.
It's got nothing to do with it.
What?
It's not got anything to do with it.
Okay, we just have a difference of opinion, a lot of them.
Commissioner Richards, I mean...
I withdraw my second. You got, one of you guys do it. I can't go for yay team. I'm sorry.
Pete, the comment I was gonna make is we've already seen restaurants do something different. Some of them are still only doing take-out. They're not serving people inside of the restaurant. So they're already making decisions, and my thought is, is the ones that are left, they're entitled to make their decision without us stepping to the table and assuming any liability and paying for any attorney fees if they get in trouble.
Okay, you guys do the cheering.
The restaurants that I have been to is following the rules, we call it. I mean, they're spacing, safely spacing, but if I had a restaurant, and we voted tonight, they tell me go out in the morning and open, whether you voted or not, I'm gonna sue you if somebody take my license. I'm gonna say, "He told me." I'm gonna do it. Now, I'm just being real. He told me. I'm gonna do it.
Yay team ain't gonna cut it for booth.
It ain't. It ain't, because I'm gonna show enough to hold them liable if he had, wouldn't you?
That's the other side of the corn, Frankie.
You gotta take a stand.
I've made the motion, and he's withdrawing the second.
I've withdrawn the second. I'm sorry.
Why did you probably withdraw the second?
Yay team's not gonna get it, man. I'm sorry.
So the motion died for lack of a second?
I'll second. I'll second. Watch it, guys.
Time to vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. All those opposed? Four-two, motion dies.
Stand in for your district.
Thank you, Hood. I appreciate that, thank you.
I make a motion to the adjournment.
Need a second. All those in favor, raise your right hand. We're done.
The adjournment.
Yeah.